Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, November 9th, so another sunny day in November. How lucky is that? I will ask our clerk to do roll call to start us off. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McEckney?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
President.
Counselor Wood Roberts sends her regrets today and Mayor Roberts. Perfect.
Okay, thank you for that. And the first item would be a mover and a second or two adopt our agenda for today. And Counselor Clark and Counselor Donaldson. Be resolved that the agenda for the committee, the whole meeting held on November 9th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? And that's carried. And secondly, is there any notice of pecuniary interest? Nope, seeing none. We'll move along to our minutes of the committee, the whole of October 12th. If I could have a mover and a second for that. Counselor Smith and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Be resolved that the October 12th, 2021 committee, the whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. So today we have two delegations coming to us. And the first one is Christian Lee and Eric Bellchamber on behalf of Rogers. So we'll just get them brought into the meeting. And we have a little slide deck that we can follow along. We'll just wait till I see.
Good morning. Can you, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear and we can already see your slide deck. So is this Christian or Eric? Sorry.
This is Christian. Sorry. Is that better now?
The first, the first one was best, I believe.
Oh, was it better before? Okay.
Yeah, I just didn't know who was speaking. There we go. And then you have to put on full screen so we don't see the rest of your computer if you want to.
That's what I was trying to do earlier, but so this doesn't help, eh?
Is that okay, Mallory?
Yeah, I mean, if we can all see, I wonder if you have a double monitor. Do you?
I do.
Yeah, and it's switching between the two monitors. So if one monitor's got the full presentation, full screen, that's the one you gotta pick, but as long as everyone, I think it's okay.
We can see it. That's just technically, we can see it and it doesn't matter what's on the sidebar or whatnot. So anyway, let's, let's move on and, and welcome. Is Eric joining us today?
Yes, Eric is here as well.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through your proposal.
Thank you and thanks to the committee for, for giving us some time for, for this proposal. So basically, I'll walk you through what Rogers is proposing. A little bit of background and some, some technical insight and challenges that we're experiencing and what we're asking of the, the committee and the municipality. And basically from there, open up to, to any questions from anyone within the committee. So this is a Rogers proposal to lease some municipally owned space to construct the cell tower as part of the EORN cell gap project, which I imagine everybody's probably familiar with. But just in case, we'll, we'll do kind of a quick overview. So $300 million public-private partnership with both the federal government and provincial governments contributing equal shares to, to help fund a massive infrastructure upgrade for Eastern Ontario. So the objectives of the program is to get to a place where 99% of Eastern Ontario will have at minimum voice calling services. So you know, that core safety and communication need for, you know, roadside or, you know, other emergency calls. 95% of Eastern Ontario with data services that are at least adequate for not high definition video calls, but at least standard definition calls. And then 85% of the area with access to full high-speed wireless. Obviously, the objectives are to improve safety, provide choice with broadband access. You know, as we, we've been, Eric and I anyway, with, with Rogers, we've been working on this EORN expansion for, you know, most of 2021 now. And one of the themes that comes up again and again is, you know, just the lack of broadband access, especially in the rural areas. Whether it be a lack of choice or a lack of choice for, for good service. So generally, it's been very, very well received. And obviously, the other goal is to prepare Eastern Ontario for next-gen technology. In fact, Eastern Ontario is, you know, kind of the, the economic hub of the country. So what this means is over 300 new cell towers across Eastern Ontario. As well as upgrading over 300 existing sites to that, you know, next generation technology, whether it's, you know, 5G, fifth generation wireless or anything that comes after that. So the site that's in question in this meeting is one of the areas that were, you know, that is captured within this EORN cell gap project. And one of the areas that was highlighted as a priority area to improve services is the area around Halliburton Lake and Fort Irwin. As you can see from this diagram, currently, it is underserved. I have an experience of myself. I imagine everybody in the committee is probably a lot more intimately knowledgeable. But to the west, it's over 14 kilometers to the next cell tower. And there's a Bell and Rogers Tower towards the west. Southwest, it's almost 10 kilometers where there is existing Rogers and Bell service. And to the east and southeast, it's 24 kilometers to the closest Bell Tower. So this is a big dead spot. And one of the, one of the reasons why, you know, there's, there's a, you know, pretty urgent need to upgrade the services. So based on network traffic, existing network infrastructure, topography, et cetera. Our network team, along with the EORN planning team, had identified a search area where it would be ideal to be able to site a new, a new tower, roughly 90 meters is what they were looking for. And what you can see in this red outlined area is what Eric and I were given as an initial search area. So a big part of our job is to, is to be able to acquire property to be able to lease and eventually construct these towers. So this is our original search area that we're working with. And what we quickly discovered is that it's, it's pretty impractical because as you can see from this red line all along this corridor, there isn't any hydro. And obviously with massive communications infrastructure, hydro is critically important. So it's not to say that it's impossible to site a tower in there, but the cost would be extraordinarily high. So from there, you know, we kind of moved out and said, okay, well, what's somewhat close by that does have hydro? And obviously, whoops, obviously along Curry Road, there is hydro all the way around. And we initially approached the township with a, about a parcel of municipally owned land right here, whoops, sorry, right here in the middle on Curry Road. However, it was, it was brought up that that is, that parcel's lumped in as part of a subdivision and could present some, some legal challenges. So they asked us if, you know, we could, we could look at other options. And we do see two other options for municipally owned properties towards the north, which I've highlighted as option one. And another one at the southern end of the road, which is option two. And I'll, in the following slides, I'll, I'll show you a little bit more detail if you're not familiar with those, those properties. So question that we're anticipating is, you know, why we're proposing municipal property? Obviously, the municipality owns sizable parcels of land within the area. Generally typically a lot bigger than most of the privately owned parcels in that area where there is existing hydro. The municipal parcels we identified do have hydro quite close by. So obviously, from a, from a build cost perspective, it's a lot more palatable. The properties from what we can see tend to be unused. So the option one to the north looks to be totally unused. My understanding, the, the second option on the southern end is used for aggregate. So I guess there's a little bit more work might need to look into that to see, you know, if having a tower there would pose any problems. But that's the extent of the, the utility at the time, from my understanding. And the other reason is, you know, with a new cell tower going in the area, you know, we're not, we're not you know, blind to the fact that, you know, it's not everybody's idea of a neighborhood decoration. So at the very least, if the revenue that comes from leasing the land goes back into the municipality and benefits everyone, you know, that's, that's generally preferred over, you know, simply one landowner in the area having, you know, kind of a windfall of extra cash. So that's why we're approaching the municipality first. So as far as option one, I'll just click back for a second here. This is again, the parcel at the northern end of Curry Road. It's a municipally owned parcel right here. Oh, yeah, where Curry Road, Delaney Road kind of goes around and intersects Curry Road at both ends. It seems to be an unused parcel. And simply what we'd be looking for is for a nine and a half by seven and a half meter fenced area for the tower itself, as well as three fenced areas for the, the associated guy wire anchors. Building a four, roughly 45-meter access road to be able to service it. And then run hydro poles from the tower site to Delaney Road. So this is again, the option one in the northern end. The second one, which is the one that my understanding is used for aggregate storage currently. It would be the same sort of idea. The compound would be the same nine and a half by seven and a half meter fenced area for the, the tower itself and also the equipment shelter. We've identified that, you know, the, the hydro would roughly be about a 90-meter run through the treat area. And what's nice about this one, it looks like there's existing access, I guess, from that. You know, the ability to dispose of the aggregate in, in this site. So those are the two options. As far as, you know, the style of tower, like I said, it's a 90-meter guide tower. So I provided a couple of renderings of similar towers. Obviously, the, the setting is different in, you know, the setting in, along, along this road, it's, it's a lot more treed and would obscure the towers more. But the goal of this is for you to see what the towers look like, not necessarily what they look like in that setting. But this is a 90-meter guide tower rendering from a site just in southeast of Ottawa. And then one a little bit closer up, this is another site that's farther east of Ottawa. And just so you can see it, it's kind of set in a cornfield in this instance. And that is pretty much it for the overview. And at this point, I guess, open it up to questions.
Sure. Thank you, Christian and Eric for your presentation. And if you want to click off your share screen and then we can have, there we go, back to, back to full screen for us. I'm sure there will be questions. I just want to let councilors know that the resolution is to direct staff to return to a future meeting with a report, providing background information regarding our policy. We do have a policy to do with cell towers. So we aren't actually expected to make that decision today, but the, I think we should be asking questions today. And so I'm going to open it up to the floor for questions at this time. So Counselor Clark?
Yes, thank you. It's true you met a mayor. Christian, you're, you're proposing a 30-meter, or no, sorry, 90-meter but 300-foot tower. I would imagine that's going to have a significant light component to that. And the reason I'm, I'm kind of raising or looking for some, some info on that is I guess something, I know in some areas there's something called a monopine or, or a lower tower that is used to, so that they don't have the, the amount of strobe lights and distractions with the neighborhood. The reason I'm, I'm raising that is, is in a number of jurisdictions around here with the higher 300-foot tower, we get complaints from lake owners who directly look, you know, have their, their properties all lit up by these things. And it kind of kills the whole concept of being in a, being in the country in natural, you know, natural night skies. And then my second, second point is, is this dealing with, you know, the type of services that dealing with a, a need for a sightline to support the, the high speed or, or the communication, or is it something that's kind of a little broader in terms of the service capability? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. I guess the first one, when it comes to the lighting, ultimately, the, the lighting decision comes down to Transport Canada. So it, it's still to be determined whether or not there'd be, there would be any lighting on the tower. You know, it's a fair, fair assumption that there, there might be. The, when it comes to, you know, the, the lower ones like the monopines that we see in, in areas like Muskoka, there are applications where those are practical. There are other areas where they're just not practical. So the last thing, you know, I think the, the goal isn't to, you know, destroy anybody's sightlines. At the same time, when it comes to population density and more importantly, topography, that can become a challenge. So those monopines that are, you know, 30, 40 meters high, they just can't service a, a region effectively. Or the, or the other thing is you might need six or seven of them, which just makes it economically impractical, even with government funding. So in, in, in the applications where they work, that's definitely our preference and we like to deploy those when we can. Other areas, they just don't work. So it's funny because those two questions you asked me, I actually just got those exact same questions from a lake association in another region. Yeah, it's one of those things. I think an indicator that the area is not currently serviced more adequately speaks to just the economic challenges of cost benefit. And then if, you know, if, if the, what's being proposed is, you know, three times the number of towers, but lower, it just makes even less sense. So that's just kind of the, the blunt answer. I don't know if Eric, you want to add on to that?
Sure. We are using enormous domes underneath the red lights at night to really protect the people in the surrounding area of roughly 500 meters to a kilometer or so from the base of the tower. So they don't have those blinking red lights at night in their bedrooms. I've spoken to Chris Olmstead, City Councilor in the township of Whitewater Region. He has a tower on his residential property. And according to Chris, it's a non-issue when it comes to light being cast downwards for a significant swath of the base of the tower.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for answering those questions as well. You know, you identified this area because, and, and Counselor McEckney can attest to this, and also Deputy Mayor Kennedy, that every single lake association meeting, but particularly the one up at Halliburton Lakes, is when are we getting cell service? When are we getting cell service? It's a complete and dead zone there. And I think that, you know, we knew the result of the, of the EORN project and with boosting some towers, but we knew that there would be the actually creation of some towers. So, you know, this is about safety. A lot of people are, we're, we're dependent on our cell phones. And so I think we have to look at that. There may be a trade-off that, that we do. And the taller tower, the 90-meter tower is the one that is being proposed, not a monopine. So, yeah, there's always a trade-off. Counselor Smith?
Thank you very much. So a couple of questions, Christian. First, between the two opt-ins here. Speaking, technically, speaking to the quality of service and, and speaking to the speed with which you can deploy it. You have a preference between option one and option two, or is it all the same in that regard?
It's kind of a, it's kind of a tough call. The, I guess, they, they both got ups and downs. So option one at the northern end is a little bit closer to our initial search area, but I think they're both acceptable. On the southern end, where the, I guess, the aggregate site, it's, it's a little, it might be a little bit easier to build. To tell you the truth, we wouldn't really be able to assess until we did a technical site visit with any certainty. But they're both, they're, they're both workable for sure. Neither are ideal, but they're both compromises in different ways, I guess, is a way to say it.
We would want to, we would want to place the tower essentially where there would be the least potential community opposition surrounding it. You know, it's up to us to try to find the least worst place possible to put these things. And so if you have some insights as municipality to say, we think that option two, the southern end is, is the far more likely to be supported by the community, then we can go which, with whichever option you feel is most appropriate.
Okay, so what you're, what you seem to be saying is that, from your point of view, you don't have a strong preference either way. It's, it's maybe more factors that we would bring to the table to determine. Okay, thank you. As a second.
From a network performance standpoint, they're, they're fairly similar. So, yeah.
Hey, Counselor Smith, there's other questions. You did have a follow-up on that?
I, I did one other question unrelated to these two options, but you know, it was March when this partnership with the EORN was announced between Rogers and, and EORN. And there hasn't been a lot of communication since then. And, and so are you aware of any plans to sort of pick up the, the messaging to the community in terms of, you know, what's happening and the speed at which things are going to get deployed? Back in March, you talked about upgrading existing towers. And, and I know there are other sites in Daisar that had previously been approved. At least then negotiations completed with landowners. But nothing's happened. So what is your communication plan and, and how might you improve the building awareness through our community?
That's a good question. I think one that Eric and I can take back. Eric and I, you know, work on the, you know, the real estate side first and foremost, along with municipal relations. But the, the EORN project communication plan as a whole is outside of our purview for sure. But that's a great point, and I'm sure you're not the only community with that concern, if that's the case. So we can take that away and get back to you for sure.
Okay, thank you. Count, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Thank you. Good presentation this morning. A couple of questions as well. Coverage for the Percy Lake area, will this, will this tower accomplish that goal? And more specifically, the west shore of Percy Lake with the expansion there. And secondly, it'd be the same kind, what's the quality of signal you're going to be able to produce? Is it broadband capable or is that the goal? Or is it just enhanced standard definition? So, I guess.
I'm just taking, so Percy Lake, the west side of Percy Lake. I would imagine there should be, let me just see here.
Looks like about 5.9 or so kilometers away. Depending on topography, depending on the number of users on the network and how much data they're consuming, those factors affect the propagation of the RF signal. It'll be LTE for the time being in terms of high-speed wireless and data. So people can use phone calls, they can listen to Spotify or watch Netflix. But again, it is dependent on the height of the tower, how many users are on the network and how much data they're consuming.
Yeah, and there's some parts of Percy Lake, I mean, if we look at the option one towards the north, there are some parts of Percy Lake on the western side that would be within, you know, under two kilometers away. And there are other parts that would be more like four or five, like Eric said. So I think it, it would be location dependent. I think it would be an improvement for sure everywhere. Yeah.
Okay. And, and also to, is that okay, Deputy Kennedy? Yeah, and to the resolution, don't forget, councilors, as I stated at the beginning, we are expecting a staff report. We do have a policy. And maybe at that time too, staff can do a little bit of pros and cons over option one and option two. And, you know, we'll have time to do our own research and maybe hear some comments from the public. Like I said, you know, you can't have cell service without towers. We know that going into it. And I, I actually think this is very exciting to get a tower up in that area. You know, Netflix, that's great. That's a bonus. It's a safety feature that I'm most concerned with, that people do not have cell service in that area. So if there's no further questions, one more from Counselor McEckney, and then we'll move on. Counsel, because this is just for staff. We're not making the decision today. Just keep that in mind. Counselor McEckney?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, as we all know, this is a great project and it's really needed, of course. I'm just wondering, I'm getting quite a few inquiries in regard to, is the public going to be involved in any of the discussions, further discussions compared to the site? And, and also, like, we're talking here about, you know, Percy Lake. Now we're saying maybe this, these two, either one of these sites is going to cover Percy. I'm sure no tower expert, but would we not try to find the proper site that's going to cover Percy and Halliburton Lake? We're comment, trying to accommodate, I'm sure we're not going to get every person, but as many as we can. And it sounds like these, either one of these two sites is going to cover the west shore of Percy. And I also have some concerns on the eastern side of Redstone down the way of Voice Bradley there, down Fisherman's Trail. There's a lot of dark areas in there also. And also, is this the first tower that's going to be put up in Daisar? On this project?
So I can, thanks. I can do my best with those. I think I got them as we went. So is, actually, I think I just lost again. So your first question had to do with the coverage. Oh, yes, the public input. So absolutely. So if we get to a place where the municipality of Daisar, they all, you know, you know, agrees that one of these parcels can work. And, you know, we decide to move forward with that, before anything happens, we would still follow your public consultation process where members of the public would have opportunity to ask questions, express support or opposition, ask for clarification, anything like that. So there, there definitely would be an opportunity for public input prior to any formal approvals. Anything that would happen before that, obviously, that would be, that would be up to the committee. From a coverage standpoint, you know, why, why here? And, you know, when you talk about covering different lakes and, and areas of concern. You know, that original search area that I shared with you at the beginning of the presentation was the search map. That was agreed on between the Rogers Network folks as well as the EORN planning group with the goal of covering as many people as possible through this project. So, you know, is it, it's 99% the goal? It's not 100% because 100% is basically impossible. But that, that original search area is where they identified that's, that's going to be the best bang for the buck.
Okay, one last question from Counselor Clark, and then I think we should move on. Okay.
Yeah, Christian, I've had some concerns raised by people who say they can't get high speed unless they've got a direct, unless they can directly see the tower. And I don't know if that's, you know, to do with the fact that, you know, trees get in the way or if it's the distance from the tower. Any thoughts on that performance issue or standard of service issue that you could let us know about?
Line of sight is a factor. It's not, I'm trying to think of the word. It's not, you know, a strict factor. So you can get phenomenal service without line of sight. For instance, you know, your, your phone will work inside your house. But, you know, if, if your cottage, let's say, is in the shadow of a giant cliff and the antenna is behind that giant stone cliff, then yeah, that's going to be a problem. And there's, there's really no technology that I know of that can work around it. Besides, you know, some kind of a satellite-based system, but it's not strictly dependent on line of sight, I guess, is the, the short answer.
Okay, so great conversation. Great. Okay, Counselor McEckney?
I apologize. Sorry. I'm just wondering, is this the first one that you're building in Daisar? In this area?
We didn't, you caught us not answering that one. Eric, Eric, you're probably better prepared to, to field that one.
Sure. I'm looking at the Google Earth map of the pins, the search maps that we're working on now. We do have one. We do have one southwest of this site at Emile's Road Coleman Lake, and we've got another one at Eastlake Road in Eastlake, so north of Percy Lake. One eighteen and McBride Road, so we're in the process of acquiring various sites in the area. But yes, this is the first Eeyorn site that that we are working on for for the study.
Whether it would help or not, but it might help ease the the people worrying about what it's going to look like. If there was one that was in the area that you built and they could go and, you know, see this thing at night or during the day. And what's in, I'm sure they've seen them before, but. When you're building one that that's close to our area, it'd be great that we were notified of that and we could go and have a look at it.
Okay, noted, thank you.
I I think councillor McKechnie, they're already, maybe you can identify Christian or Erica, there are already existing cell towers in Daisar. There's one on Berry Line just north of.
It's going to be put up. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they might be varying tower styles or heights, but yeah, that's something we could provide. Find, you know, the closest one in the area that would be very similar to what we're proposing. Yeah, that's. That's a free request, we could do that.
Okay, great questions, great conversation. Thank you for joining our committee, the whole meeting today. And at this point, I'll look for a mover and a seconder to make the recommendation that I was referring to earlier, staff report. So Deputy Mayor Kennedy and councillor McKechnie. It resulted that the committee, the whole acknowledges, received the proposal from representatives of Rogers Communications. Detailing potential telecommunications tower locations on municipally owned properties. And further direct staff to return to a future meeting with a report providing background information on the proposed properties. And providing policy guidance in relation to Daisar Policy Thirty Eight. Which is a municipal protocol review of telecommunications tower proposals. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Thank you very much. Exciting news. And I see we've already brought in our next delegation is Jody Curry. Welcome, Jody, how are you?
Really good, thank you.
Great. We have a very lengthy staff report that's included in this package, but you requested delegations. I think that's how we'll start. We've all had time over the weekend or yesterday to review this proposal. And so I'm sort of going to turn it over to you for your comments on this, if that's okay.
I I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you because we do have have concerns. But I also have to say, we we really do understand the difficulty that you have with access to this property. So I don't envy you your decisions you have to make, but but there are some things we want you to think about when you make those decisions. Jeff and I looked at the two options that he suggested last week. And I submitted another one that was number three that's in your package. But that was before I became aware that the county had kind of nixed the idea of a one way access. And I know, Andrea, we've talked about this and it would be great if that could get back on the table, but at the present time, it's not on the table. So just a reminder of what's happened to date. When we first talked about this property with councillor Deputy Mayor Pat Kennedy. It was suggested to us by the planning department that we could probably get a hundred, a hundred units on this property. And we took a look at it and thought, if we want green space and we want the type of a community plan that we're hoping for, that sixty might be a more reasonable number. So we worked on those numbers and then and then Daisar, you you guys asked that we reduce that to forty eight. So so we did that and we became confident with that number. We were pretty sure we could get both a healthy community plan and a financial plan with forty eight units. But if you select option one, you're asking us to put our development on thirty four percent of the land. That you originally suggested would be ours. And I I sent those two drawings, one had a nice green blank area, showed all the setbacks and the. The perimeter of the property and then it's at the same scale as our site plan. So I don't know if any of you are the visual types, but what I do is I hold up one piece of paper that has my my site plan on it. And I superimpose the green, the one with the green vacant stuff over top. And it gives you a really good picture of what happens to our development if you construct a number of roads and turnarounds that you're proposing. In in those options and it it really. It it really hurts us greatly. Option two isn't is better, but it's. They won't be developing right now. We're kind of on hold indefinitely, which also is not, you know, great from our point of view. I I want to talk about why that matters to us, why it matters if we only end up with twenty four units or or whatever we can fit on that property. And it matters because we've done extensive work to come up with a site plan that we submitted, including a geotech study. And I'm going to call it a green energy study, a a company that's very respected and well versed. And how to power your developments using solar power and other options. And our plan, the the pods and buildings that we're planning to create. They will be powered by. By by solar powers that we're providing. So it's it's from our point of view, it's what I call net zero, which might not be the technical right word for net zero. Or definition of net zero, but we're going to create all the power we need to service our units. That's really important long term because it means our plan is going to be financially viable fifty years from now, a hundred years from now. And as you know, P for P, places for people are in this for the for the long haul. So that's really important to us. Our buildings are also going to use new technology and methods that result in buildings that will last a hundred years. As opposed to the current thirty to fifty years. And we need to be able to spread that type of cost over over forty eight units and and many years. With forty eight units, we can do that. We spent a lot of money coming up with this plan because we're in it for the long haul. And we know that sustainability ultimately allows us to continue to provide healthy, healthy housing environments. And environments that allow us to focus on our tenants. As we talked about before, we manage and support our tenants. And that makes for successful tenancies. You don't get the complaints, you don't get the problems. So it's really important that we have the time and the ability to spend. To be able to do that with our tenants rather than fixing a roof every five years. So that's why we focus on that, one of the reasons. And it also makes for good neighbors. So we are aware that, we are aware that the. The county doesn't want us to access via Wallings Road. That's been made pretty clear. You have a big decision on your hands, but we could really access via Hallbeam right now. So I just want you to think about that. That is a possibility. We could just use Hallbeam as a driveway. And you have a significant challenge to accommodate. The level of density of development that's happening in this particular area at the moment. But we're starting to wonder if the plans that we're we're looking at now are more about accommodating the future development. Of of the waterfront property on Head Lake than the current proposed development. And the and the Wallings Road residents. And it also begs the question. I don't want to offend you here, but how how bad do we want affordable housing in in Daisar? And where do we fall on the spectrum of we want development? I'm not, I'm not against development. In fact, I'm very pro development and I always have been. But sometimes our actions or our words of that, you know, affordable housing is a priority, isn't always reflected in. In action. And, you know, we've been at this since September of twenty twenty and from a purely planning perspective, we haven't really got very far. We've got far, Places for People has come a long way in coming up with plans and figuring what's going to work and doing budgets. So it's not wasted time by any means, but from a planning perspective, we're kind of still at square one. And that's a concern to us because either of these two options aren't really working out for for reasons I've already mentioned. So. You will recall that the townships in the county signed on to a plan about two years ago to create seven hundred and fifty units. In the county of affordable housing. And I don't, that was two years ago, so I'm not sure what's happened in the last two years, but we only have eight years left. So we take off what's been created so far, which I think is just a Switzer property, but I stand to be corrected on that. And there's a long way to go, like, we really need to be thinking about this and you all know how urgent it is becoming for people. So I want to remind you that we're offering to do this at, yes, there'll be costs to you upfront in the form of incentives, but the long term cost is nil. You don't have to look after these tenants, you're not going to be paying for maintenance of the building. We're doing all of that and I don't know, and and I stand to be corrected and that would happily be corrected, that there's other people in line to do this type of work. And I I again want to speak to the successful nature of our tenancies. We don't have a lot of problems with our tenants because we look after them. Everybody has problems, but if you look after them from the beginning. They're no longer problems, they just become members of your community. So, but the people that we house live and work here in in Halliburton County. They might be a minimum wage earner, they might be a retired couple or. Aunt Mabel who can't stand or doesn't have the capacity to look after her house in Gulford anymore. And just, you know, needs a place that's safe to live that she can walk to town. So when you're deliberating about the access issues. I I'm going to ask that you look at the big picture as well as all the lines on the page, which I realize are very important and somebody's got to do all that work. But this plan, this particular parcel didn't require an official plan amendment because the official plan specifically. Anticipated this type of development at this location. And the property is within walking distance of many services and amenities. It has the potential to be developed in a green way and I know that's a really overused term. And yes, it is hard to be green and it's very expensive too, but it is what we're doing. That's what we're doing for the long term plan. It has the potential of housing persons who cannot possibly afford current market rents. That's a big deal right now. I don't have to tell you about it. And it also has the potential of housing people who are never going to have the opportunity. That we, many of us on the screen here have had that allowed us to get into homeownership. It it's not the same anymore. Young people don't have a great opportunity for homeownership. I don't think I have to. I don't have to teach you about that, you know all about it. So if you remove the lion's share of the property that was originally planned to be given to us. It puts our whole plan in jeopardy and it also greatly diminishes the opportunity for you to provide housing for people who actually live in our community. So I don't envy you your decision. I'm not saying it's easy. I'm not saying do this, don't do that or else. I'm just saying, please take all that into consideration when you think about these access issues. And taking this piece of property and basically turning in it to a number of roads. And that's basically what I had to say. I thank you for your time. I'm pretty passionate about this. And I have this excellent committee that has worked their tail off, all volunteers for the last fourteen months to come up with plans. That we spent money on making sure are going to work on that property. So I think I'll leave it at that and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be some questions and but I first want to start things off, if I can, to thank you, Jody, for your passion and your commitment to places for people. In general and also to this project. Yes, we have been in contact and in just communications over this property for over fourteen months now. The original access for in and out of Wallings Road came at the direction of myself and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. And because we felt that that would be, A, the most potential use of land. Without creating widening of any roads there. We talked about having a pedestrian access through there on our Daisar road allowance. We undertook, Daisar undertook a traffic study last year. And we felt that the comments of that traffic study would be enough to satisfy things at the county. I have to say, I don't think the county's actually nixed the one way proposal. What's happened is that we're we're in this juggernaut. We're in this logjam here because the county has a study from ACOM that says full or partial closure. And they don't have anything else. They don't, that's their study and they're basically saying that our study only mitigates risk. It does not, it does not eliminate risk and that's what they were looking to do. So our whole proposal and the guidance that we have given you, myself, Pat, Larry, staff through us. Has been to create a site plan of the original site plan. We know that options one and two, creating a two way street through from Wallings Road to Halbium. Eat into the property that's developable to a point of making it not viable. We also know that we have, are going to have major objection in that area. So I have actually asked for this, for an item to be added to tomorrow's committee, the whole agenda meeting at the county council. I'm not sure if it's too late or if that will be accepted, but if not tomorrow, I will be bringing that forward at another time. To see if the county will undertake their own specific traffic study. As I search already has one that isn't to the satisfaction that I answer three particular questions regarding the. Traffic at the intersection of Wallings and County Road Twenty One. So I've sent that along to the warden and to the clerk and and I don't know the outcome of that as of now. So at this point, like, we are. Past needing affordable housing and the clock is ticking. And we've all invested a lot of time and energy and money at this point into this project to date and we really want to find a viable solution. So I'm going to open it up to the floor for questions, comments to Jody. And we'll go from there. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then councillor Clark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Jody, I can't get over the effort and and passion that your committee has with with this project or thank you for that. It's it's much needed here in the areas, we all know, so I won't get into that. It all boils down to the road and our study says that Wallings can handle it, county one says it can't. The cost implications of the county study are basically even without place for people going forward or. Outside the realm, I think of what Daisar can afford. So we're at an impasse and until we can get this road situation resolved. To the benefit of of everyone or the best we can do. I think that unfortunately, we're in a stalled position right now. I for one really would like to see this project go ahead and with using Wallings Road. If we have to make some alterations there, street lights or stoplights or whatever, right turn only. There's some options out here that have been considered by the county and. Mayor Roberts has done, has done a great job of trying to push this forward and she'll have my full support tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm a little confused because I thought we had, we we recognize that there's a number of issues with the Wallings Road. And and I thought we had identified that this particular property actually has frontage on Halbium. And the driveway into by Halbium would have been something that we can deal with in the in the nearer term as opposed to having to. Address the, you know, the drive through issue off of off of Wallings. Is that still on the table or has that been nixed or what's happened to the Halbium road access?
The the councillor Clark, maybe I'll answer that first and then see if any staff want to join in, Jeff. So what was recommended at the county was a temporary road access off of Halbium until. Further studies would happen, but if we don't look at this as a holistic approach, knowing we've got another property, number seventy seven Wallings Road. That is in the early planning stages with staff, so that's the old MNRF property. And look at this as a whole, a temporary road access may actually limit the project even more. We do a temporary access and then we find out this is what we're being told. This is no criticism to county staff or the county whatsoever. I, Pat and I, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and I sit as county councillors. The problem is, what I'm trying to get moved forward is that it hasn't come to the council table for discussion. And county can only comment on studies that council adopted, which is the ACOM study of twenty seventeen. So that's where hands are tied, that's where the dilemma lands. And we need to look at not just the Daisar property, but the whole area. With answering or asking specific questions that were not asked in the ACOM study. So that's why the county can't say one way street or no one way street because the ACOM study only says full closure. That means closed at the bottom of Kent Wallings Road and all traffic go in and out of Halbium. Or the partial closure option, which was closing it partway up where Wallings Road sort of does the loop, the keyhole. And all of that traffic be in and out of two way street. The two way street, both councillor or Deputy Mayor Kennedy and I see is not a viable option because back to the problem of it is. Eating into the twenty meter roadway is eating into the property that is needed for development, whether it be for the setbacks or buildings or. Or or et cetera. So that's the dilemma we're in. I'm asking to bring this forward to the county table. That's the dilemma we're in. I'm asking to bring this forward to the county table so my fellow county counselors can have discussion that because. So that we can direct staff to look at further options.
Can we expect that then to to be table tomorrow and have an answer?
You know, I I've.
This is dragging on way too long.
I've put my request in writing and I realize it's after an agenda has been published, so we'll we'll see. We have to follow. Procedure and it's uh, we'll we'll see where we're at with that. Would be no decision-making. It's just. It would be a request to direct staff to for that. Jody, I see your hand up, so go ahead.
Um, I just want to clarify that we suggested a temporary access uh, off of Halbium because we understood. That that may might make life easier for you in the long run. We we are more than content to make that a permanent access if that's a possibility, like we we don't have, we're not set on a. Temporary one. I'll just lay that out there because I know you have. Uh, other things to consider.
Absolutely. That's why I was saying to to me, uh, in my role, in my position, I need to look at the property as with a holistic approach to. All the properties there and the full potential of developing Dicert's property for affordable housing, but also. The other property for future development. We don't know. That has not come into the public realm. Again, that's just with staff at this point as well. So at this point, I mean, our our recommendation obvious, I mean, we. Jeff, maybe I would like you to speak to it a bit. I was gonna, we you know, we we've got a blank there as option one, two, and three, but we. Clearly are looking at options one and two as being not viable for the project. So do you want to speak uh, to this a little bit, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Um. Jody's correct. The development of this property has been a been a difficult process. Um, access has always been uh. The driving factor of how this project or this property will be developed. So. Given that we now have the county's comments, um. We've staff tried to come up with some some options that both balanced um, short and long-term access options until that's been decided. Option ones, we realize this really cuts in and jeopardizes the the places for people development. Um, we don't like that either, um, but. Staff are of the opinion that that long-term access has to be considered by council until there is a solution. Um, we're not saying that that two-way street is necessary, but until we know it's not necessary, I think it should be considered. Um, and perhaps the county will consider a one-way street, but um, in speaking with county staff, um. Further studies would be required supporting that one-way option before before they would make that decision. So things are kind of up in the air and uh, we apologize for the delay. Uh. We know that it's not an easy decision for council how to proceed either. Um, but yeah, happy to answer any questions you have. We're just trying to to provide some options, short and long-term, move this forward.
Thank you, Jeff. One thing I'm thinking is in our resolution today, it does uh, ask us to pick an option and I would think that maybe today. We would just uh, receive this report and it says further that the committee, the whole um. I I would delay whatever selecting any option to see the outcome of. If not tomorrow, but certainly um, the appetite to get it on a county council agenda or comment there. Because with um, okay, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
I thank you. Um, you know. Places for people here have been uh, tremendous in terms of the uh, investment they've made in this and the importance. For this community is uh, um, you know, probably can't be over. Um, and I wondered uh, if it might be helpful uh, for uh, for you and the deputy mayor at county. If you had um, you know, a a recommendation coming from this committee, our entire council. That strongly supported uh, option three. Uh, because that is the really the only one that's viable to uh, uh, places for people. So uh, oh. Instead of receiving this report, would our endorsing option three be helpful? Uh, to you and uh, and Deputy Mayor Kennedy? Um, when this gets to county council, whether it's tomorrow or at the next meeting?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, what's your thoughts on that?
It goes back to the whole road issue, doesn't it? Um, not. Certainly a strong uh, support from this council would be a help. Um, I'm not sure if you want to couch it in option three or just that uh. Um, that it get resolved. The 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 decision on whether where the road is going to go. Are we going to take our study that shows that Walling's Road is still appropriate? Or are we going to take the county one which says any further development? In this area results in the closure or partial closing. That's what it boils down to. That's and uh. Um, I'm not just sure how to proceed. I know Mayor Roberts has got some other suggestions on for tomorrow. Yeah, it's a good question, Counselor Smith.
Well, I I think the request.
I just want the county to know that we are, I I expect unanimously enthusiastic about this proposal and making it happen. And option three is the only viable one. From the point of view of places for people and if if they don't believe in the route we can go, this thing is going nowhere. Um, and and so for you to be armed with that, uh, you know, unanimous support from from our group. Um, you know, may increase the likelihood of success at county, but you know. You and the mayor are the representatives there, so it's in the end, uh, I just want you to know that uh, I think our group. Is happy to help in any way we can.
So I'm just going to look to Mallory. One one option we could do is to and because uh, that. The committee, the whole could delay the uh, certainly option three is the only option at this point. I am looking for an option four, which isn't even on the table. Uh, and so and none of that can happen unless we do ask the uh, with with the further traffic study. Supporting um. Which is what I'm requesting, either like all traffic going in and out of Walling's Road with a with a. Whatever upgrades would need to be made there or that Walling that the in connection between Walling's and helping would be a one-way only. This option three still shows a twenty-meter when Dicert technically has, I believe, we we have eleven meters. Um, that we currently own. So I'm not sure if there's a benefit of actually selecting an option today, but I do like the added. Support if we could and we could take our resolution. Uh, to county council if not tomorrow, but in a future meeting. That that we requested the county do 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 something, Mallory.
Yeah, um. We could, uh, the committee, the whole could request that Mayor Roberts and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Uh, I don't know how to word it. Uh, cause you you're going to be bringing this up at the county tomorrow, so we really don't want to pick an option. It sounds like we need to. We need further information before we pick something.
You know.
You know, express the importance of moving this project forward at the county table.
Yes, I think.
Is that general enough? I mean, we don't really want to pick something until we know more information.
That's what I'm thinking and I think that the um, uh, certainly. If it is allowed to be on the agenda tomorrow, I can speak verbally to the uh, passion and unanimous support as Counselor Smith has just talked. Uh, spoken to. So we could just change and further that the committee, the whole and then change um. You know. I think like.
But could we express support for our option that allows uh, places for people? To uh, to build and uh, and manage a development of at least forty-eight units?
Yes, I think we in in a way through other resolutions, I think we sort of already done that. Um. Mallory, go ahead, Jody.
But but have you? I mean, uh, I understand you have you have with us, but have you said it publicly and? And are we not deliberating? Are we not having a big problem because of what might be happening in the future? A future development that might be happening that that as far as, you know, isn't in the public eye yet, but I guess. You know, are how long do you make the people who want to make something happen that our residents really need wait in order? To see what's going to work for other people in the future. I just I just got to say that again, like how how important is affordable housing here? And I'm going to leave it at that.
Jeff?
And and I just want to say, where where staff are coming from, we're not just looking at one future development. We're looking at the county's comments and their recommendations that uh, basically if the county closes the intersection at Walling's Road. County Road twenty-one, long-term access is going to be required for those property owners on Walling's Road. So it's not just looking at a development, it's. That they're recommending partial or full closure. So. That's where I'm coming from. It certainly doesn't take away from my desire for affordable housing, but it's just looking at that long-term access option.
I think all we should do today is receive the report. And wait to see what happens either tomorrow or if it's not able to be added to the agenda tomorrow for conversation that I. Definitely have time to request that it be added to the um, county council agenda. And I don't think I can find the right words. Right now to do and further that. Just don't, they're not, they're not flowing for me and this isn't easy and so maybe less is more. Uh, you you you've got my verbal that this is what I'm hoping to do and uh. I think we go from there and just hold the resolution at the end of just that we've received this report and the delegation. Is that okay?
I think that, Tamar, did you have your hand up?
I I was just going to say, and Mayor Roberts, you mentioned at the beginning that you're going to ask the county to undertake their own traffic study. Um, to satisfy the concerns with the various options. Should that be part of the resolution if you are going to do a resolution account? To the county.
Well, don't forget, we're committee, the whole, we're, we make recommendation to our own council. So I don't know in this resolution if we need anything actually more than that. I think that um. I would report back to the next Dicert council meeting at the where things are at. With this proposal. If that's okay? Okay, so is that okay? Uh, Mallory, if I just stop that? But we should also that we that we do, we've received the report. And the delegation from, we should put add and the delegation from Jody Curry from places for people. Can you add that?
Yep, I can add that.
Okay, so maybe if it's okay, uh, I'll get you to read a resolution and then I'll look for a mover and a secondar.
Um, I I'm gonna have to write it in full after. Sorry, I've been trying to write several resolutions while we're talking. And we're just not going with any of them at this point. So um, but I can read what we have and then I'm going to add after that we're receiving the delegation from Jody Curry as well.
Okay.
So be resolved with the report dated November ninth, twenty twenty-one pertaining to project design and road access options. For an affordable housing development on the lands of the municipality desert at all, part lot fourteen concession eight. And the geographic township of Dicert is received. And further that the de- delegation from Jody Curry is received as well. I'll word it better than that, but that's the gist.
What about and further that the committee, the whole? Oh, never mind. Give it. Thinking out loud. Uh, if that's okay with the mover and a seconder, we we've heard that resolution and I will. Anyone? Do we should, you know, the other option we could do is take a pause. We could, I was going to call for a break anyway after J- Jody's delegation. Uh, Jody, you'll be leaving the meeting, but you can certainly still be watching the meeting. And maybe we just take a few minutes to word something if there is something that we want to. Feel that we want to move forward to Dicert council or that the committee, the whole recommends da-da-da-da, something else. I think maybe just taking a pause during a coffee break, if that's okay with everybody and coming back with a resolution. We're trying to work. Yep, that's not. So. If that's okay with everybody, I know it's a little tad earlier than we usually do. I will call for a fifteen-minute recess and we'll reconvene uh. In fifteen minutes, it's about ten eighteen and um, we'll see if we have a a resolution that's a little more. What we're trying to get the message across. Okay, so we're in recess for fifteen minutes. Okay, and we are back from recess now and uh, we have added one line to the end of the resolution. So. Uh, in this case, instead of looking for mover and seconder, what I'll do is I'll read the resolution and then look for mover and a seconder. To see if that meets everybody's expectations. Be resolved that the report dated November ninth, twenty twenty-one pertaining to a project design and road access options for an affordable housing development on the lands of the municipality of Dicert at all, in part. Lot fourteen concession eight in the geographic township of Dicert is received. And further that the committee, the whole acknowledged receipt of the delegation from Jody Curry. President of places for people regarding the project design and road access for the Walling's Road affordable housing development. And further that the committee, the whole requests that the county review and consider Dicert's traffic impact study. Or suggest a viable alternative option that will allow places for people to maintain a forty-eight unit development. We have a mover and a seconder for this resolution. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark. And all in favor? With unanimous support and that is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jody, for uh, hanging in as we took that uh, break to um. Find the best possible wording for that and.
Thank you very much.
Onward and upward. Okay, take care.
Take care.
Bye now. Okay, so we will move into the body, rest of our meeting, body of the meeting. So the. First item up is our fire department report and I believe we're bringing in our fire chief. And he's not here. He might be out on a call, I believe. Um, so the report is there. The only thing that uh, I want is going to ask him, so maybe um. Tamar, you are able to do that is to continue to promote the green flashing light. I witnessed on Sunday morning when um. One of our volunteer firefighters was coming along. I was coming out of Halbium and uh, one of our firefighters was coming along with his green flashing light, so I did not do my left turn. I waited. And then I watched him try to get vehicle. Nobody moved over for him. Nobody knew what it was. And I happened to bring up the conversation with um. With a young person who's living with us and who's new to the area. And I always said, oh, people don't know to pull over for a green flashing light. And he said. What does that mean? And I said, well, it's a volunteer firefighter trying to get to the station. He says, oh, it wasn't on Sunday, but he had someone. Uh, follow him with a green flashing light. He's from Toronto. He just thought some souped-up vehicle was this guy. So we need to promote using our local radio stations, using our local media, using social media and all the townships, I'm sure. Are in this dilemma. When someone has a green flashing light, pull over. They are your volunteer firefighters and they are. Trying to get to the station to to go out on a call. Anything else on the fire report? Uh, if not, I'll get a mover and a seconder to receive. Uh, Counselor Clark and Counselor McKechnie. Here is all that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the fire department report for October twenty twenty-one. All in favor? Carrie. And next we have Public Works and our director of Public Works is on holidays this week. Which seems to be practically impossible to do, so I'm happy for him for that. So I'm not sure if the. And. Okay, I didn't realize that was, I've forgotten that because we didn't have her as a delegation. So we are bringing in Phyllis McCollough. Okay. And this is on the first item with the letter from Winona Lake.
Hello.
Hello, Phyllis. How are you?
Hi.
Are you able to turn your screen on or you just gonna, you don't have to. I can hear you.
No, I'm forgot that it was off. Sorry.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so we have your letter. We've received your letter. Did you want to speak further to it?
Um, well, just, I was listening to the last part of the meeting and we have a newsletter that's going to be coming out soon. And I think we need to put a little thing in there about green flashing light, so I will do that. Um, and I just, um, I really didn't want to speak. I just wanted to be able to answer some questions if. Um and I just um I really didn't want to speak. I just wanted to be able to answer some questions if if uh your committee had any.
Okay, any questions to Phyllis? This is a big issue all over the township. Uh really had to deal with this before because things just went on the way they always were. Tickety-boo. People plowed on on uh municipal roads that were not maintained by the municipality in the winter. So councillor Donaldson, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um because I was just talking to uh a snowplow operator to kind of get some details on this. And obviously they're they're being bombarded with what's happening. Um so he just gave me a couple of details. Um for your particular like or private drive, how many cottages are are on that private drive or unassumed road?
There's several unassumed roads. Um one, two, three, four, five of them.
Five that are full-time residents?
No, it's uh some are full-time and some are are seasonal people.
Okay, so um what he explained to me was that to first of all, you have to understand that insurance is is the main issue, but it's not just a little bit like it's going from five thousand dollars that these operators have had to pay to over twenty thousand dollars. So it's a big hit and uh it's gotta it's gotta go down into the customer. But um it what helps him, uh he says is that on these private roads, if the driveways were also a part of what he does, not just the private road, that would help immensely on the price. So maybe that's something that you can look at that um the private if if the private driveways would also give the work to the person that is doing the private road, that would be very helpful if they're traveling miles to get there.
Did you have anything? I think they often do, but go ahead, Phyllis.
Yep, um for all of the places. Um we we had one person that was doing the smaller unassumed roads and he was doing practically every other driveway um on, you know, the west east side of the lake um where most of those roads are. And it was for the people that have the homes or the the cottages on those roads. So it was a it it wasn't somebody different coming in and doing driveways. It was the same person doing the roads.
So so just to to end that, um so there are people out there that are biting it and paying the insurance uh to do that in the county. Like when I just Googled it, it was like there was four in Halliburton County. Um so have you looked into all of those?
We we have and they're not taking any new customers is what we were told.
Oh, oh, okay, because I I just I gave your area and he said he would be willing to to chat with you.
Well, if I could get that information, that would be helpful, but we have been uh you know, everybody and their brother. Uh we've been been trying to contact and you know, we would like to keep the business in Halliburton. Um they're you know, we're desperate and you know, they've been looking farther, but how successful we'll be with that, I don't know.
Okay, so um I see there's there's other councillors, which is great, but I just want to maybe councillor Donaldson uh offline because we don't want to name a name of a company online. You can um contact uh Mrs. McCulloch. Uh I believe we would have your email here. We'll figure out a way to to contact. Uh you know, the timing of this is pretty dreadful. Would as I said at the beginning of the meeting, it's a sunny day in November, but many times we have already had snow on the ground by now and it's you know, it's definitely coming. So for us and without staff here, we don't have uh you know, any uh comment from staff. There's not a staff report on this because this is not just in your area. It's throughout our municipality and throughout the county that we're hearing of this. So uh I did see some councillor Clark and then councillor Smith, I believe.
Um yeah, thank you. Through Madam Mary. Yeah, um um Phyllis and I have talked on this a couple of times or corresponded, so it's something I've been doing a bit of research on. Um and 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 also I know the work that Rob Camelon has been doing. He's done some research in other townships and just trying to see what goes on. Uh so we've been as as a township, we've been pretty lax in terms of defining, you know, the the this whole concept on on winter maintenance. Um and um what what we're situated with is is like I say, unassumed roads because they don't meet uh township standards for us getting equipment down, even fire and ambulance equipment getting down them is is an issue and and uh they actually should be marked as as not, you know, not usable roads, but um uh in reality, like people have been doing it over the last few years. What we've what I've been um it it is great that um that councillor Donaldson is as somebody who might be interested in it, Phil, so that's a good that's a good light. Uh see, um but I've talked to a number of other people who do use contractors for clearing um snow and the big issue with a lot of the insurance companies is slip and falls. Apparently that's it's just gone nuts. Um and I guess maybe with either with this climate change or or some of the rentals or whatever, but uh the amount of 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 um um claims on slip and falls was really driven the the numbers for the insurance companies. And what she was able this one lady was able to do and handles a number of businesses over in over in the west or over in Central County is they negotiated with their insurance company where the 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 clients that they were they're clearing uh would take responsibility and sign off that they're dealing that they would address their own slip and fall. So that may be something that the um you know, that the clearing or the 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 contractors who are doing the clearing may maybe in a position, but you would need you'd probably need sign and sign off by those who are on the road to say that fine, we will be responsible for our own sanding or or whatever and and um we will not be held liable if if people have any of those kind of issues. That may be an option. Um but um anyways, but eh the other thing is we still need some more or more clarity from the township in terms of of these standards and also to sign the roads. I think it's the other thing that we've been a little bit lax. When people buy a property on these seasonal roads or or their zone seasonal, they 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 really usually buy them on the understanding that they they're not year-round access and there are limitations with regard to clearing into emergency services and that kind of stuff and um I think we have to we have to take a step and and make sure these things are signed as well. So people who who are not or maybe renting renting or disaccessing the properties under and and not owners understand what the limitations are. Thank you.
Hey, thank you councillor Clark. It's very difficult because some people have owned properties on private roads for fifty years and have been coming up and getting their snow plowed. And then all of a sudden in twenty twenty one, out of left field, this is a quite a surprise. So it's, you know, not through any negligence or lack of trying to be prepared for this. Who knew? Councillor Smith, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you. And and maybe first and through you to uh Ms. McCulloch. Um are these all private roads or are they municipal roads that are only maintained during the summer?
They're only maintained during the summer.
So they are public Dicert roads? Is that correct?
I I don't want to say yes. I don't want to say no. I just know that um in the summertime, Dicert will come and do some maintenance on those roads.
Well, if if we do maintenance during the summer, they must be public roads and the and your letter here describes them as roads. I know that Winona Lake Road is a public road. Um some of the side roads and there was some of them you call roads and some of you call lanes. Uh normally normally if they're labeled rain lane, they're a private road.
Okay, I that I didn't know. Okay.
Um so I I know Rob's not here, but um and and you know, to uh uh your point, Madam Mayor, it is late now to re- rearrange, um you know, our uh our snow removal crews, uh you know, for the winter that's just around the corner. But um I'd like to uh see us uh get a report. Uh we have about thirty kilometers of uh of uh public roads um that are not maintained during the winter. And and um you know at least one of them is uh quite a stretch of road that's used for snowmobiles and frankly doesn't have any uh you know uh residence on it. Uh but there's about fifteen kilometers, I think, that are like Winona Lake Road that are occupied um to varying degrees. And and what would it take to bring those up to the standard of our other public roads in terms of winter maintenance? Because it's when it's a public road, how did we arbitrarily decide that certain roads aren't going to get plowed during the winter? Um you know, those people are paying the same taxes as people that are on public roads that do get plowed during the winter. And um you know, to me, it's uh it's just not clear as to why we don't provide a year-round maintenance services on these. We've uh I've dealt with a couple here and uh in my ward that we did uh get upgraded and and now are being uh out during the winter, but uh um you know, it's still piecemeal. And so why is that? And what would it take us to provide appropriate services to all public roads?
Yeah.
Um I did, yeah, I just I just I see you councillor Clark and I think we're probably thinking of the same thing. And I just maybe gonna just turn this over to Tamara just a little bit with Rob not here and the implication of that would be. And also keep in mind that the 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 zoning of those properties is seasonal waterfront. Whether we plow the road there or don't plow the road there, that's is the with limited service. Uh and so we have to be very, very careful what we're doing here. Uh whether it's through insurance or or signing agreements with people and giving permission to allow plowing to be on these roads. I do not, I mean, we can get a staff report. It would probably take some time to get that report, but it would also be absolutely unrealistic to bring those roads up to a standard where we would then be plowing them in the winter. There's not turnarounds. We don't have the equipment. We don't have the drivers. Like we'd be in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So Tamara, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit and then I'll go to councillor Clark.
I was just gonna echo some of your comments about the limited services. Also councillor Smith mentioned that lanes and so forth indicate that it's a private road. I think we have streets, roads and avenues, I think are the public road are designated by those extensions. Um I I agree, the immediate implications, if you're looking at all of the roads that meet these same criteria are pretty pretty big. You wouldn't get it in place, I don't think, for this winter at the very least, but once you go beyond that, you've got some of the same issues with the private roads that aren't on municipal road allowances in terms of access and being able to get plows and propane and everything else. And it's a much bigger discussion when you get into the road those roads. I think we looked at the mapping and there's over three hundred and fifteen kilometers of private roads, which is as much as we have public roads. So right there, you've got a doubling of our budgets.
But just sorry, just to clarify, I'm not talking about private roads. I was
No, I know.
referring to the public roads that we we you know, there's thirty kilometers that we do not uh ten percent of our roads, we're not maintaining during the winter.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, councillor uh Clark.
Yeah, um I I yeah, I think councillor Smith, there's a little bit of confusion because usually what happens is for the township to a assume a road, that road is brought up to a standard. When an area is being developed, it's it's the developer or whoever is bringing that road up, they have to bring the road up to a certain standard for us to us for the township to assume it. And we've got a lot of areas that were were zoned as 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 seasonal because they're unassumed roads. They don't meet township standards. Um so what you would see often is if somebody went in and developed an area, there would be probably an extra hundred thousand dollars in each of the properties to bring the road up to a standard where it meets municipal standards. But what's happened over the years is a lot of these seasonal or unassumed roads um have enabled people to have their cottages and and because they're able to do a private contractor to keep them open, they've been able to have to to establish a bit of a year-round uh uh residency, but they're not viewed as being on a year-round seasonal road. The core of the lakes is guys is a very good policy on it. And what they established is that the maximum number or the maximum amount of service that is done on the on the unassumed roads is is two gradings a year. Any 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 types of of improvements with regard to gravel or culverts, whatever, are the responsibility of the people on that road because it's unassumed. It's not a responsibility of the township. So we've got to be very careful on on how you look at this, councillor Smith. It's you're you're talking kind of an uninformed approach.
Excuse me, uh
Okay.
Say that I'm uninformed.
Just a minute. Raise, excuse me councillor Smith, you have to raise your hand if you want to be recognized. I realize that councillor Clark was speaking, but if you want, he wasn't quite finished. And we don't want to call other people uninformed. We are talking about a request on municipally-owned roads with seasonal service, which means summer only. That's the only thing that we're talking about. And I think that we need a staff report to come back. Uh it won't be pretty and um I am going the person I saw next was councillor Kennedy and then councillor Smith.
Thank you. I would just add that that staff report also include maybe a comment from our legal as to what our legal obligations are with the municipally uh owned road with summer maintenance, but we're also handing out snowplow grants. So just need clarification. This is a big can of worms for opening up here. Unfortunately, um this McCullough and Winona Lake are the first ones on the block here. And uh it's it's not going to get resolved overnight, but uh I think that's maybe the best approach going forward. This they come up, take some time to come up with a a good policy and and also reflect on how things like snowplow grants originated forty or fifty years ago to start with. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um Mrs. McCullough, I see you have your hand up, but I'm gonna go to councillor Smith next and then we'll finish with you and uh we'll see Mallory in the meantime, if we can add to that resolution to direct staff to do something. Councillor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Um yeah, so uh definitely your candidate's got it. It's it's not about private roads here. It's not about unassumed roads. Uh those are not on property owned by the municipality. But uh there are about thirty kilometers of roads that are owned by the municipality, are maintained by the municipality during the summer and um for whatever reason uh we've chosen uh we being the municipality has chosen in the past not to plow these roads during the winter. In many cases, it was a lack of demand. Um but uh as the the world has changed, as more people are spending more time here, whether they're here permanently or whether they want to access their place uh even for weekends during the winter season. Um you know, the municipality, it seems to me ought to understand what would be involved in providing year-round service on those municipally-owned roads. Private roads are a completely different matter and um you know, and they're private roads. I'm not interested in assuming those. I'm not interested in providing service to those roads because they're private roads. They're owned by somebody else. Responsibility. And as councillor Clark pointed out, they were not developed to an appropriate standard by the developer who sold off those lots. And uh you know, they are what they are. But um um you know, as I said, we've had and uh you know, in the in the last two or three years that I've been in council, we've had a few that have come forward. And um and you know, sometimes when an issue's been dealt with, uh such as a a rock on a small road here on Kinesis, uh the owner said that removed and and then the municipality had enough space to turn around and plow and said, okay, we'll plow that. Um we had just recently uh um another road that uh uh Rob did some research and found out gee, that is a road that we shouldn't be providing uh winter maintenance on. And he added that to his uh schedule. There are, as he has said, to us about thirty kilometers of roads that he does of our three hundred and fifteen kilometers that he does not now provide winter service to. About half of that thirty kilometers is on a single road uh that leads to a camp and there's no other cottages on it. And uh and we've chosen not to do it, but there's still about fifteen kilometers that I'd like to learn more about and understand what are the uh uh costs? What are the implications in terms of uh of residents on that road? And um and 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 that's the report. And as uh every mayor's suggestion, we could add to that uh things like a a legal opinion and uh consideration of uh these uh grants that we provide. Um you know, we don't provide us for pu- private roads. We only provide grants for publicly owned roads. But uh you know, let's get a comprehensive uh report. It doesn't need to be next month. Uh it's not going to address this winter, but it could allow us to uh understand this issue and uh adjust our routes, uh fifteen kilometers to be added is uh on a you know, three hundred kilometers of roads is not a uh an overwhelming amount if we have time to plan and organize for it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you councillor Smith. And lastly, we'll go to Mrs. McCulloch for um any final comments and then I'll see Mallory if you've been able to add something to the resolution.
Thank you. Um again, I want to thank you for um talking about this. Um for the since the middle of October, um my phone and my email has been going crazy with just the people that are on Winona Lake that uh live there full-time and come seasonally. Um you know, upset about what's happened and not knowing what to do, trying to get some information and 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 it's it was kind of, you know, is it are people other people aware of this? Is this just are happening to our lake? Um you know, we pay, my husband and I with with our cottage, we have to pay insurance to cover um our cottage um all year long. And so we've had to pay someone to clear our driveway. Winona Lake Road is done, but our driveway is done by us. And so you know, they're 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 covering and and then we have the people that are on these roads on canoe on Manitou um that have been also paying so that they have someone to clear the road so that they can get in and out. Um we all love our lake and we love where we are. Um we don't want to change things and we're Um, we don't want to change things and we're just looking for some help. Um, wanted to make the, the, the problem known to people. Um, and yes, it's happening all over Halliburton and every other place, but we need, we needed to make it aware that we have a problem.
Okay, thank you. And uh, we are aware. So Mallory, I'm going to turn to you and see if you are able to uh, add something to the resolution.
So I'm going to read what I have written down and if one has suggestions, we'll, we'll go from there. So be resolved that committee of the whole acknowledges received as the letters from Winona Lake residents detailing their difficulty securing private contractors to maintain their seasonal roads in the winter. And further requests that staff return to committee with a report detailing the money and resources required to maintain all seasonal public roads in Dicer in the winter. And further, that's the staff report review the legal implications of policy thirty-three, a policy to govern the annual snowplow grant, grant requests.
Okay, so I'll look, that was very well worded as my opinion, so I will look to see if we have a mover in a second or for that as read. Counselor Donaldson and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. So it has been read, so I'll ask for a vote, all in favor? Okay, and that carries. Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. McCullop.
Thank you.
Okay, bye now.
Bye bye.
Okay, so we're going to move along. We have a um, surplus tandem axle truck with snowplow we're going to sell. We've done this before, we use govdeals.ca. So the resolution is just receiving that, any comments? If not, we'll move along, I'll look for mover, seconder. Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Clark. You resolved that the committee receive and acknowledge this report as information and that the committee recommends the council declare unit three two zero nine one being a twenty ten international tandem axle truck with snowplow equipment as surplus and directs that it be auctioned publicly on the website, www.govdeals.ca and that the proceeds from the sale be placed into the development reserve. All in favor? I carried. And next we have um, comments on security in industrial park as requested by a delegation. It's not anything very simple. I don't know, Tamara, if you want to speak to this because Rob's not here. Uh, you might want to talk to the fact that we have reached out to the OPP, et cetera.
Um, yes, basically, he's provided some costing here. Um, just general costing of what it would cost to do some elimination within the industrial park. Um, I think it's noted that fifty percent would be around twenty-two thousand, so doubling that for the full elimination on forty-six poles. There would have to be, he's recommending that a study be done, uh, photometric study um, be considered prior to the installation. And uh, basically, there's some options there, but it's, at this point, it's just to receive the report.
Any questions on this? Counselor Smith, go ahead, and then Counselor Clark.
Uh, thank you. I wonder if uh, uh, if we've reached out to the uh, representatives of the Home Builders Association that had uh, um, you know, filed the, the complaint that expressed the concern and uh, you know, shared with them these costs and asked them if they would be uh, you know, prepared to uh, to fund these upgrades that would just service their area. So, you know, it could be a, a, you know, a special tax levy or something that would allow them to uh, um, receive the security improvements they want. Uh, but um, you know, I don't know, I don't see any rationale why the uh, taxpayers across our broader community should be uh, um, you know, bearing the cost of this. And, and so uh, you know, we know here that uh, by the time you add a security camera or two, it's, it's likely to be fifty thousand dollars. And um, oh, there'll be some, maybe some ongoing uh, operating costs. So if uh, if the business is there, um, you know, bear that, uh, you ought to give them that choice.
Tamara, oh, uh, well, can I just let, Counselor Clark, just let Tamara, if she can, I don't think she can answer that, but uh,
Um, we haven't certainly asked them anything at this point because that's for council to receive this information. But I'm not sure that you could present that information to them. I'm not sure how they'd respond to that. Um, basically, yes, also noted the cost of the cameras, which are also needing access to wifi and hydro as well. So there could be battery ones as well. So maybe hydro might not be as much of an issue. Um, but as um, Mayor Roberts did note, we have asked the OPP if they would uh, come as a delegation to council over the next month or two, um, just to talk about some of the issues around town and get an update from them as to where they spend their, focus their priority efforts and so forth.
Rikings are not unique to industrial park. I mean, uh, you know, uh, every, every year, uh, you know, dozens of residences, uh, cottages across our community get broken into and uh, bribe the various security services to help uh, address that, but in the end, uh, it's an unfortunate reality. Um, and um, and, and so, uh, you know, it just seems to me that uh, if people want something above and beyond, uh, what we provide everywhere, uh, that they ought to, you know, be prepared to buy some funding for that.
Okay, that, that's not actually, that's your thoughts, that's not actually what's being proposed at this time, we're just going to receive their report, but Counselor Clark and then Deputy Mayor, uh, Kennedy?
Yeah, it, it's just what all the businesses around industrial park, road and Mallard Drive are having, having issues. Um, it's the automotive people, you know, the builders, you know, that they're all having issues with, with uh, with, with theft or people coming on and causing damage or or, or whatever. So it may be, it may be appropriate to have the OPP, um, uh, you know, s- speak to what can be done or what would be an effective way of um, providing some security for those businesses. Um, I'm not proposing that we do a full lighting solution, but you know, as, as Rob has proposed, maybe a partial lighting and I think it's five K for a camera perhaps down at, um, you know, industrial park in twenty-one. Um, would provide some level of, of uh, control or security for cars coming and going if there are, are issues. And this, this is a different issue than, than private residences, um, up on the lakes. This is, this, this is the industrial core or, or the business core for our community and, and people don't live there, so they, they do need maybe a higher level of, of um, of security or consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
I just, uh, just wondering if the security camera alone would be sufficient? It would track a couple of key locations in there, uh, solar powered would, would suffice and encourage those businesses to take their own security enhancement measures. Um, in addition to that, but we would just, rather than doing the lighting, if we were to provide a couple of security cameras that could be monitored and then be under municipal policy much as we have elsewhere. But in the event of something happening, it could be reviewed. Is that a reasonable solution? I don't know.
It, it's hard because there's still quite a high cost to cameras and I don't think that you can have the same kind of camera um, that uh, you know, would be in a, in a smaller area off of a building, say in the park. Um, that, you know, in order to capture and have clear image with a license plate or make a model of a vehicle or people to really identify, then, you know, we're, we're probably not talking, I don't even think that money. The thing that I see in this report that it does request is a photometric study before we do anything. Is it dark? Is it just interpreted that it's dark? We know that the one um, uh, business that was broken into had his own security cameras and couldn't see the, the vehicle. We have a problem with vandalism and with the crime increase in, in Halliburton and Dicer. And as Tamara said, we've, uh, we were invited the um, detachment commander to come and speak to that, particularly in the village, uh, and, and we'll also reference this industrial park. So I think the only thing really at this point we should do is see how much a photometric study would even cost. And that does illumination and says if there's dark spots or areas where there aren't before we start doing too, too much else. So that would be my thought because it does say in the paragraph, uh, at the end there, near the end, it says, "A photometric study should be considered prior to installation of any lights to ensure proper placement, direction, wattage, et cetera." So maybe we could request to staff to see what is involved in the cost of a photometric study. And we'll also be able to ask some questions when, when the detachment commander comes as a delegation. Is that okay? At this time, um, should we be adding, connect if I'm given, if we, me, giving direction to staff for the photometric, cost of photometric study? Can we include that in the resolution? Is that verbal?
Well, I've already written, I've already written another part, if you want me to read it, if that's
Please.
Okay, be resolved that committee acknowledge and receive this report regarding security in industrial parks information. And further that staff be directed to return to committee the whole with a cost estimate for a photometric study in industrial park.
Okay, uh, mover and seconder, then I'll look for. Counselor McKechnie and is seconded by Counselor Clark. You heard the resolution, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you, Mallory. Uh, what is next? Oh, garbage, garbage. Okay, John, we have John on screen, I believe. Hello, hello.
Good morning, everyone. Um, the first report, so at the September fourteenth, uh, meeting of committee of the whole staff presented a one-year extension from MidOntario disposal. A committee of the whole directed staff to tender the recycling, garbage and construction and demolition waste hauling and processing, processing agreement from January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. An RFT was issued on October first. Um, staff informed a number of haulers and industry associations about the RFT, which closed on October fifteenth. One company bid on the work, MidOntario Disposal, which is our current um, hauler and processor. Uh, pricing in twenty twenty-two would see a slight decrease of a zero point five one percent compared to twenty twenty-one and pricing in twenty twenty-three would see an increase of two point nine four compared to twenty twenty-two. Um, and staff recommend an agreement with MidOntario disposed to be executed for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three years.
Okay, any questions on that? I think it's great. To your tender, Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thank you. Um, how much do we spend or how much do you expect we will spend with MidOntario uh, on these services uh, for the full year of twenty twenty-one?
Um, I don't have that number in front of me, I'd have to look it up and get back to you. I can report back at the uh, councillor committee coming up about what that is.
It's, it's uh, you know, kind of between one and two million dollars?
Um, I can't recall. I did, like, I, I have to look it up.
Well, it's uh, uh, this is a lot better to have the price go down by half a percent as opposed to increase by the four point six that had been previously proposed is a, you know, is a much better outcome and certainly demonstrates the value uh, of a competitive bidding process. Um, you know, where an organization had planned and proposed, offered to, to do the service with an increase of uh, four point six four, I think it was. And uh, as a result of the competitive bid process, they actually reduced their price by half a percent. So that's uh, uh, that's a win for our taxpayer.
I agree. That's why I said this is great. Lock it in. I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and John, uh, Counselor Smith. You resolved uh, that the committee of the whole recommend that garbage recycling, construction and demolition waste hauling and processing agreement with MidOntario disposal from January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three be brought forward to the November twenty-third, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, pardon me, council meeting for approval and execution. All in favor? That's carried. And next we have the uh, recommendation or report, I should say, back from the uh, from the previous um, delegation we had regarding the food cycler pilot project. So go ahead, John.
Yeah, so at the October twenty-sixth meeting of council, uh, representatives from food cycle, food cycle science, uh, did a delegation about their food cycler composting device. Um, that device, as you know, retails for about five hundred dollars and uses electricity to dry and grind food waste into a dry odorless nutrient dense byproduct, which can be used on gardens and lawns. Um, the staff were asked to report back about this uh, device um, and a potential pilot. So staff are kind of presenting two different options. The first option is the one that food cycle science suggested, which is basically official inclusion in the um, Impact Canada funding. So this uh, funding from the federal government subsidizes the retail purchase price of a food cycler to two hundred and fifty dollars. Dicer would then purchase a hundred food cyclers at, for that two hundred and fifty dollar cost. Um, and then they would be sold to pilot participants for a hundred and fifty dollars. So we're recouping that hundred and fifty dollars. And so therefore, our contribution to the pilot project is a hundred dollars per household or ten thousand dollars. Um, and that would be accounted for in the twenty twenty-two environmental management operating budget. Um, because Dicer does not subsidize backyard composters or digesters. Um, option two, uh, is basically not, is it presenting a scenario where Dicer is not subsidizing the cost of um, the diet of the food cycler. So in this scenario, um, food cycle science would not apply to Impact Canada for funding for this project. And they would offer us a reduced purchase price. So we would be purchasing them for three hundred dollars and we would sell them for three hundred dollars to the public. Um, there would be no uh, uh, increase or it within the budget, we just have a straight uh, kind of expense and then revenue to court, to recoup the cost. Um, in that option, there is a minimum purchase of thirty-six units, one pallet. Um, in terms of the number of units that we would be required to purchase.
Okay, thank you. And either way, the participants follow the, because it's still part of the pilot program, they still say how often they use it, like there's a whole schedule for them to follow.
Correct. Technically, under the sec, under option two, they do not, it's not officially part of the pilot project, but we would, at Dicer, staff would institute it as a pilot with all this, the surveying to get, gather the feedback about its usage.
Right, we would still ask that. And then also you have in your report to uh, whichever option we choose, do we do it uh, by lottery or first come, first served? Or um, you know, say we'll take applications up until a date and if we ended up with a hundred and fifty applications, we literally just would do fair uh, and pull names out of a hat, sort of, so to speak. But we'd have it like a closing date. Um, so really, I think the conversation, um, just one question before we open up to the floor. Algonquin Highlands did participate in the program and did they go on the um, subsidized program and reduce costs and it cost their municipality? Can you just explain that?
Yeah, so they, uh, Algonquin Highlands went with the subsidized option, so the, the township did subsidize the cost, so residents were purchasing the, the food cycler for a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so at the reduced price, their pilot just ended a few weeks ago, so they have their survey results, the surveys are kind of being wrapped up. I was able to get some of the initial very preliminary raw data, which um, did look very positive in terms of residents' feedback about the device and the continued usage of it even after the pilot. Um, so that was Algonquin Highlands' experience with it so far.
So they did invest the ten thousand dollars?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, questions, option one, option two, participate at all? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
So if, if we went with option one of the subsidization, um, after that time period, would we still be uh, able to offer the uh, digesters at the reduced price afterwards? Um, or is that a, is it the one, one, one or the other? Do we, I think we're gonna have a big uptake on the, on it uh, with the subsidization. And it'd be nice if the ones who didn't win in the lottery were at least able to purchase them for three hundred dollars afterwards. And I guess that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah, I could definitely speak to the, to food cycle science about that. I suspect they'd be very agreeable to that. Um, I can say that when Algonquin Highlands launched their pilot, they did have about fifteen Dicer households approach them about joining. So they, Algonquin Highlands has a list. Um, I have a list of about eight households so far that since the delegation to, to council and, and reports to the newspapers about this, there has been some interest already from Dicer households about participating.
Okay, thank you. Um, further questions, it's the uh, Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark.
Thanks, um. You know, uh, John, I don't know if you've looked at uh, at some of the online reports. Uh, you know, can you speak to the scientific uh, evidence that supports the value of the uh, of the food cycler device?
I think the, the scientific uh, kind of experience of using the, the food cycler is very comparable to using a digester or a backyard composter. The advantage to a household is that it's going to compost much quicker. And there's the perception that you're not going to be uh, a encouraging wildlife to uh, open a backyard composter or, or be digging around a digester. So although a digester that we currently do sell um, is bear proof essentially, um, People have the perception that having this unit in their house is going to reduce any wildlife attraction. So technology is essentially the same, just on a much faster basis.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, it's an interesting question. Um, and um, and I know that the uh, I use our composter and uh, outside, I've had no problem, but I, when I suggest to others around the lake that they get these things to try. Uh, the uh, the perception that they're going to attract uh. Uh, you know, bears and uh, and other critters, uh, you know, is something that hold many people back. And uh. You know, the request for ten thousand, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money. Uh, but when you compare it to our uh. Um, you know, and our cost of handling uh, uh, waste at over three million dollars. Um, if we can find something like this that um, you know, reduces. The um, the demand for landfill services. Um, it uh, you know. It could be a uh, a money saving activity in the long term. And uh. Um, you know, my own research, uh, there's uh. You know, there's some mixed reviews. I mean, this thing is sold on Amazon for five hundred dollars. And uh, there's lots of reviews and and frankly, most of them are positive. People are uh. Uh, committed and they're happy with this thing. There's a few uh, that uh, may not have followed the instructions that have used uh, put too much moisture in it and so forth, and they're dissatisfied. But that's true of almost anything that's uh, sold in this world. And uh. And so I think that uh, this would be something that's uh, worth learning more about and uh. And that uh, you know, the option one here uh, would be something that would be uh, you know, worth our pursuing. Thank you.
Um, okay, so there's one support for option one, which is costing. Uh, municipality money, but for a benefit and Counselor Clark, go ahead and then Counselor McKechnie.
Yeah, I I I see this as a bit of a duplication with the digesters and and um, I've I've been using digesters for a few years and never had any problems. There's no smell or anything to them. They're a different technology than the composter. Um, so it's, you know, for some reason, it just seems to do the job, but it doesn't require electricity. But I can see the food cycler being something important because it is convenient for for people um. Uh, for the township then to participate in it. I think um, as as part of the program, they have to, they have to agree to doing uh. Um, I guess some kind of a survey program or. Or or whatever to substantiate why, you know, why we're paying for it for them for our convenience as opposed to them. Going to the backyard and and uh, putting stuff into an eighty dollar um, digester. Um, so it's. The the question then comes up, you know, so shall we be subsidizing the digesters as as well as um, if we're going to subsidizing these food cyclers um. Then long term, looking long term for the township, it does reduce the the this part of the of the um, waste that we don't want in our dumps and um, and hopefully over time it'll reduce. Use all that. We don't have to worry about what pulling programs to process this stuff. So there is benefit to it, but uh. Ten thousand, I I'm I'm, I've I've got some, I've got some concerns about spending three hundred dollars for each of these units um, or whatever the township's going to be paying. Especially when people have been buying digesters, you know, for eighty bucks for the last number of years.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Clark. I think what we have to decide, and I see Counselor McKechnie's next, it really is. Should we be subsidizing this? We definitely want to, there's a desire to go forward with the program. Even if we are selling them, if you think about it, and we sold them at three hundred dollars to so no cost to dice art. Um, it's still a huge reduction if they're five hundred dollars online plus tax. Uh, so you know, it's got to be somebody putting their name forward to to want to participate in this. We'll still be asking for the data. The data is going to be out there from Algonquin Highlands. Um, you know, it's just a. A sort of ethical dilemma. Do we? Fully subsidize or sell them at cost, which is what we're, which we're. Which is what we're getting at our cost, which is still two hundred dollars less than if someone went to purchase themselves. Counselor McKechnie?
Um, I I'm not in favor of spending ten thousand dollars on something that. Somebody else is making uh, money at and uh, we got a lot, a lot of other issues. And um, just remember what that lady said who did the presentation. Where's hers? Hers is in the basement. Why is it in the basement? Because it's noisy. Among the other things. So that's my point. Thank you.
Well, I think, okay, and I think the thing is to get the data and you know, the fact is probably uh, are we still limited, uh, John, to the one hundred? Is that the number? Like what happens if we did have a hundred? What if we don't subsidize, but we get a hundred and fifty people? We can't purchase a hundred and fifty at three hundred dollars?
We'd be able to, um, because the minimum amount is thirty-six units, we'd have to purchase for sure, for sure. Um, so if we needed to go a hundred or more, that would still be fine.
So one benefit to the unsubsidized program, if you will, getting that at the reduced cost is we're not limited to the number. If we had applications received and we put picked a date up until a certain date, we could sell. Whatever number up and uh, you know, we had a hundred and forty-two people put their name forward at the three hundred dollars. We can go for it. Whereas the other, we're capping it at a hundred. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
It just uh, with the digesters, you have to have a backyard and just be caught just into the fact that there's a lot of people. And dice art, you do not have that luxury. That live in condos or apartments or whatever.
I, you know, I I I think that there'd still be a lot of uptake. I think personally that it it's, I'm totally supportive of this. I was really interested. I went online after the presentation and looked uh. Looked at them um, myself on Amazon. Um. And uh, you know, if it is done through a lottery, uh, and it's no bias that counselors are allowed to put their name in, then I would put my name in at three hundred dollars. So I'm just one person of all the residents that we have in dice art and I would participate in a program. So I'm just using myself as an example. If I didn't. Uh, and I don't need it to be subsidized. So that's, that's my own personal opinion. Um. I think it's a great program. I think I personally, I talked about I, you know, peeling potatoes. I was thinking the other day, there I am peeling more carrots and I don't have a composter. I don't have a digester outside. I'm sorry to say I don't. Counselor Donaldson, did you want to weigh in? Option one or two?
Yeah, um, I think option one is is uh, viable. I mean. We're just talking about uh, having our own data with the roads and the. Um, at wallings and. I think that it's good that we have our own data. I mean, we could just like take the data from Algonquin Highlands, what they did, but. I feel like having our own data is. Is viable in this and also subsidizing it gives more people that want to participate the option. Um, rather than some of them that wouldn't be able to afford three hundred dollars. But they could stretch to a hundred and fifty. They're they're still going to have. Waste, so I think it opens it up to more of a variety, which gives you uh, better numbers, I think, at the end of the survey. And how much do we pay for data? And uh, surveys and. Uh, uh, other things that we have to have to be able to do something. Um, I think that this would be well worth. Worth the money because it just opens it up to a wider variety.
Okay, thank you. I think uh, I'll check with John. We still, we still would be. Retaining our own data if we did it at the unsubsidized. The difference is, do we? Do we subsidize? And to your point of that is then you are making it maybe more readily available for someone who says three hundred dollars is too much, but a hundred and fifty I could. I could do. Um, but John, we still will, whichever option, we're still having our own data.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so it's really just about whether we want to subsidize or not. So um. Maybe what I'll do is with the show of hands, option one is costing taxpayers ten thousand dollars, but great program, limiting it though to a hundred people. Option two is no subsidy, so no cost to the taxpayer and not limiting the number of people that can apply. Did you want a question to that?
Yeah, ju- just a quick question to John. Um, is there any uh, money, grant money available for such a thing? On the waste management in your industry? For such a thing?
Not specifically, um, because. Uh, food cycler science is uh, gets money from the federal government uh, from this impact. Canada funding and it is related to food waste reduction. Um, but they're able to to apply for that because they're working with multiple municipal partners across the country. Um, and so we're just not really in that same boat to have access to that kind of funding.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, what I'll do is to see if there's a show of hands for option one, which is the subsidized portion. So there's three that want to subsidize. And. Option two, which is not subsidized. Counselor McKechnie, I can't see you, so I don't know what you're going with.
Either one.
Well, either one will split the tie that we would subsidize. Personally, I'm I'm uh, leaning to not subsidizing, so then that would be.
We're gonna have to hire somebody to sell these?
No, this is out to completely under John's uh.
Oh, he doesn't have enough. Now he's a salesman. Now, what's the, what's the, what's the flavor of the choice next month, John? What are we gonna be selling next month?
No, no. So um, so it looks like it, just through the show of hands that the, that we would subsidize the program. So I will read that resolution then. Uh, John also, excuse me, um, do we support a lottery system with a closing date and uh, using social media and advertising, et cetera? Um, so that it's fair instead of a first come, first serve. He already has people on a waiting list, but I, which, what do people want to go with there? A lottery system? With a closing date? Okay? John, so I don't know if that's in the resolution. I can't see. Uh, I'll need a mover and a seconder then to choose option one. You have a mover, Counselor Smith and seconded by? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy? You resolved that the committee of the whole recommends that council. Uh. Choose option one, which is to allocate and approve ten thousand dollars net to the twenty twenty-two environmental management operating budget for a food cycler. Pilot project to take place in the spring of twenty twenty-two, subject to funding from Impact Canada. All in favor? Okay, so that's enough and that carries. Counselor McKechnie, that you voted in favor of that, right? Because we went to, I honestly can only see the top of your head, just the way your screen is tilted. Was that in favor? I'm.
No, I didn't vote in favor of it.
Okay, we're in a bit of a dilemma. When I did ask with the show.
Like I said, I'm not interested in it. Like I, I think they, they're great. If people want them, they should go out and purchase them. I don't think we should.
Okay.
We, we made a lot in our plate, as far as I'm concerned.
Sorry, when I asked for the show of hands, which option one or option two?
I said either one.
You have it either one, then.
I don't, I don't want either one.
Oh, you don't vote for either one?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Sorry, I apologize.
Neither one. So that changes the flavor because I clearly stated that I wanted to go with the. The program at full cost and so did Counselor Clark, I believe. Mallory, can you help me out here with a little?
Yeah, so if. If Counselor McKechnie didn't want either one and we have three votes for option one, that still carries, wouldn't it? That's the majority. It's odd because we have six people today. But I think two people are voting for option two. One person's saying neither one and three are saying option one. So I think, I think we still carry.
Well, isn't that confusing? We will still go with option one and a lottery system and we'll let John handle that. Uh, I did read the resolution and when I called for the vote, so we, so basically all in favor was. See, abstaining from a vote is a no vote. I will vote in favor. So there we go. Okay? All in favor, it's carried. Even though I would have put my name in for a three hundred dollar one. There we go, that carries. Uh. Hardcore. Landfill winter hours.
So um, on October twenty-sixth, I uh, council, uh, there's a delegation requesting an one additional operating day of five hours to be added to Harcourt landfill's winter operating hours. I'm just as some background, on March twenty-third of this year, dice art council approved. New summer and winter operating hours at dice arts five landfill sites. Um, dice art council reconfirmed those new operating hours on April twenty-seventh with the passing or the approval of the new waste management bylaw. The new summer hours started on May first, twenty twenty-one, and the new winter hours started on October first, uh, twenty twenty-one. The new winter hours included the reduction of a one day operating day each for hardcore landfill, Kinesis Lake landfill. Um. The one thing I'll kind of stress in this. Uh, report is that we've only been one month into the new winter operating hours, so there's not. A lot of data to to show. Um, in twenty twenty-one, in October. Uh, Harcourt landfill had nine hundred and sixteen vehicles. It was open for fifty total hours in the month of October, which is essentially processing eighteen point three two vehicles per hour. Um, if you compare that to our other landfill sites, Halliburton landfill, for example. Was processing forty-one point eight four vehicles per hour. Wes Guilford was processing twenty-three point nine five vehicles per hour. Kinesis Lake, twenty-one point six one vehicles per hour and West Bay fifteen point two four vehicles per hour. So. Um. Even with its operating hours in October, Harcourt was kind of in the same ballpark. Essentially for number of vehicles being processed per per hour. Um.
Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if there was uh, in it, there is in the reports some information about what it would cost to add in additional. Uh, operating day of five additional hours uh, in the winter months.
Okay, thank you. We said when we made these changes that change is uncomfortable and people don't like change and people are used to going, used to be used to go into their landfills or dumps, let's call them back. Then to go seven days a week whenever they wanted to. And you know, if you lived in a city, you have garbage pickup once a day or once a week, pardon me. You miss that, you gotta wait two weeks. So I I know this is uncomfortable. I I think that we should at least get through one season and not make any changes at this point. Uh, and we can review if you want in the spring. Uh, Counselor Clark and then Counselor Donaldson.
I'm sure you, Madam Mayor, um, John, we we talked about Highlands East having a um, a waste site close by and if there's any opportunity for us to kind of do a bit of a reciprocal. Um, you know, just so that it provides, you know, that extra, a bit of extra time. Do you have any, any luck at all getting information on that or?
Yeah, so Highlands East operates the Mumford Road uh, landfill site, which is about five kilometers away from the Harcourt landfill. In the county's service delivery review, one of the recommendations was that these sites. Uh, emerge essentially. We've had some very, 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 very preliminary discussion just about what this process would entail, looking at experiences. When Minden did something similar with Highlands East. Because it requires amendments to the environmental compliance approvals, it takes about a year and a half. Uh, plus figuring out the cost sharing agreement between having uh, residents cross municipal boundaries. So it is something that is. Being explored. Admittedly, um. We still have a bit of landfill life, they still have a bit of landfill life, so it it's not a fast going process of discussion, but it is something that is there from the county service delivery review, something that should be explored further.
Okay, and then Counselor Donaldson.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. Um, one, I see West Bay uh, has less vehicles and more hours just for the month of October. Um, and less average vehicles. Um, so I don't know what your thought is on that, if you're going by the numbers and um. The vehicle count is eighty percent more than it was the year before. Um. And I believe that in April or or in the spring when we were deciding this, uh, you said that. Um, Tuesdays had five cars in it, I think, and that's why you decided the Tuesday. Um, but obviously there's a lot more vehicles. There's a lot more people around in the area this year than there was last year. And um, also the amount of um, the contractors. That would come in on Tuesdays. If you're a contractor and you dump on Thursdays. Uh, you ha, or Saturday. If they work Saturday, they have to wait all again till Thursday. So we're missing all of that. Contractor um, waste. Uh, income on the Tuesday because they have to wait. Or they go somewhere else, I don't know. But um, and right now. Um, it would only be five hundred dollars on the till December. Rather than the fifteen hundred dollars. And I feel like. Most people, they don't realize that it is cool, um. The Tuesday, if they keep their last year's uh, schedule. Then um. It it's not, I mean, everybody will soon know that Tuesdays would be open and they would be able to go again rather than trying to. Get their garbage to their neighbors so that they could drop it off, um, because it's. It's a. Inconvenient, um, or they just, they can't physically make it out there. So. Um, or they just, they can't physically make it out there. So, um, and the other, I think that's all the ones that they brought up. Um, for it. But if you want to do it for a whole year and see what the numbers are and see if they're still higher. Um, that means they went for a whole year with just, or the whole winter with just two, two dates. It's, um, I don't know, you could, they could just go with why, why is West Bay got eight hours extra? We're only requesting five.
Any comments to that, John? And then we'll go to John, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, um, again, this is only one month worth of data, so the vehicle count that Harcourt experienced in October of 2021, we don't know what November 2020 is gonna look like, will be the same, will be less, we, we don't know. Um, so I think that's the same kind of statement for a West Bay landfill. Again, we're only looking at one month worth of data. In terms of contractors, um, DICER does operate five landfill sites in October. The, what, the what, there's only a few contractors that have pre-approved credit accounts that utilize the Harcourt landfill in October. They didn't use the site at all because there's just less work happening, um, as far as we know, or they're paying by debit or credit card. Um, which is, uh, again, we're not, we're, Harcourt landfill is generating quite a bit of revenue. So it's not like we're, we're losing money at that site from, from contractors bringing materials to us, even with just being open the two days at the moment.
Okay, thank you for that. And, uh, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thanks. Um, we, uh, we spent a lot of time in the spring, uh, late last winter, early spring, uh, discussing this. And, um, and we, it was not just Harcourt, but also Kinesis and West Bay went from three days uh, down to two days during the winters. Um, the extra hours that are showing there for, uh, both Kinesis and, uh, and West Bay relate to the hours that they're open, not the number of days. Uh, Harcourt, uh, on Thursday is a nine to two, while, uh, uh, Kinesis and West Bay are, uh, at 10 to 5. Um, when there was a rationale that was offered to us in the spring as to why those hours were, uh, were different. Um, but, you know, the, the concerns that were expressed, um, you know, by the, the residents from Harcourt are the same as the concerns that were raised by people in the Kinesis and West Bay area. You know, it's sort of like nobody said, gee, I, I really embrace the idea of giving up the Tuesday option. Um, but, um, you know, made the trade-off and said for economic reasons, we want to try it at two days per week. And I think, uh, you know, we need to stand with this a little longer and, uh, you know, not just based on the first months of experience. Um, and again, if we go back and looked at the data, uh, that was presented to us last winter, uh, the Harcourt site on Tuesday, uh, received very little traffic, um, you know, again, going back to, uh, 2019. Uh, some days it was open for that five-hour period and, and literally had a dozen or fewer vehicles in over the course of the whole day. It just didn't make economic sense. And, uh, and so I, I think the recommendation to receive the report is appropriate right now. And, and it's, uh, Mayor Roberts has indicated, we'll watch this data over a little longer period of time, not just for Harcourt, but for the other sites also. And, uh, and revisit it when we've had some, uh, um, you know, a more reasonable amount of experience as opposed to reacting to one month. Thanks very much.
Okay, so without it, then I will look for a mover in a second or to receive this, uh, report. So Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark. It resulted the committee, the whole received this report on Harcourt landfill's winter hours of operation for information. All in favor? Okay, and that's Carrie's. Thank you, John, for everything. That's great. Okay, we will move on to parks, recreation and events, and, uh, Andrew Mueller's going to be joining us for this. And morning Andrea.
Morning, how are you?
Very good. And the first thing we have up is, uh, just a park update, please.
Yeah, yeah. So o- over the past few weeks or month of October, uh, the park staff are busy completing all their fall, spring, summer work that had to be done. They've moved into winter operations already, although you wouldn't know it from the weather outside today. Um, but they've got the snowmobile parking area ready, all the docks are put away and fenced off. Um, the water fountains have been securely stored for the winter, um, and pumped out. Um, they've done work at the sculpture forest, they cut down the tree at the, the rink. So there's been quite a bit that they've been doing. And then there's been other things that have obviously popped up and just, they've had to kind of shift and, and go in different directions. But, um, it's been busy and they're moving along and in good shape for the winter.
That's great. And I, yeah, I noticed that tree was down and I'm wondering before, um, ice does settle in, is if we have a leaf blower or something, so the concrete in the outdoor, uh, rink needs to be cleaned as to get as little debris as possible. Um, the problem was that, I mean, it's absolutely full of pine needles, uh, from that tree. So if that could get cleaned up as well. The, I don't know if you want to report in this, or maybe, uh, let me look and see if you're reporting on something else. Oh, no, yeah, well, you talk about the off-leash dog park next. So there's other, uh, things done down in the Rotary Beach side, the pathway's been complete. Um, did you want to speak to that at all? Any other stuff done in that area?
Sure. So I'll, um, so yeah, and I'll make sure that they clean off the rink. I'll ask them to do that. Uh, I know they're going to be blowing off the cenotaph and everything tomorrow to be ready for Remembrance Day, uh, so maybe they'll have time tomorrow to get that done. So I'll move over to Rotary Beach and with the off-leash dog park as well. So, um, if that's okay.
Yeah, Counselor Smith, can you hold your question? Just. You, you're mute, so I don't know if you can hold your question. Andrew was on a roll. You're still muted, Counselor Smith. You can hold. Okay, I'll just let Andrea finish.
Okay, so a- as you mentioned, the path, oh, sorry, the pathways have been done. Um, they're, they're, they're in great shape. But I was talking to the company last week. Um, they happened to be there when I was meeting, uh, another contractor and they, they were, um, edging the sides of the path and just, um, they're, they're, they're in great shape. They put in a, um, culvert at the entrance to Rotary Beach to help mitigate hopefully the water that runs off. They've taken away some of the planters that were there. So, uh, it won't happen this year, but next spring there will be some rain gardens put there to help absorb the water as well and to, to do some landscaping, and that's all part of that grant. Um, surprise, when I wrote the report about the off-leash dog park, I hadn't, the co- company had said they would be in sometime this fall to, to do the, the, uh, park. And then the day after I wrote the report, they called me and said, we can be there tomorrow. Can you be ready? So, uh, it's in, it's in place. I don't have pictures to share with you because my report was already completed. Um, but if you wander down there, you will see that it's in place. It's locked at the moment because we don't have signage up. We don't want to have people using it until there's signage there. Um, Ryan has already purchased and, and installed a, uh, doggy waste station within the vicinity of the park. Um, so it's, as soon as we have signage up, it's ready to go. And that's on my report. I have proposed signage, um, wording for signage. We looked at, I looked, I worked with bylaw and we looked at examples of different parks in and around Canada, Ontario, different places. And this is what we came up with. Uh, now it's just, it, it's just, I haven't done any like graphics or anything with the sign. It's just, this is the wording. I wanted to make sure the wording was okay. So we can get the sign made and put up right away so we can open up our park. Um, so if there's any concerns, I don't know if you want me to go through them or everyone can just read them for themselves.
What I'll do first, I know Mallory, what I'll do first is we have the, I got all excited because yes, I did see the dog, even though I don't have a dog, I saw that it was up. So let's go first to see if there's any questions on the parks update, and I have a resolution to receive it. Any questions on the park update? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, um, Andrea, in the parks update, you mentioned the outdoor rink at Maple Avenue will be open sometime in December. The weather permits. Um, is there any plan with regard to other outdoor rinks?
The staff said they won't be doing the one at West Guilford this year. It's, they, there's a grant in for, um, a refurbishment at, uh, for the West Guilford community rink that Jennifer Covert worked on. Um, the staff last year, the reason that one was able to get up and running is the staff weren't working at the arena as much. They had the time to do that. So the arena staff were mostly managing the outdoor rink at West Guilford, whereas, uh, so they said, no, it's not in shape to, um, to flood. And because it's a pavement surface, it heats up really fast in the corners and different areas. And so it was hard for them to keep and maintain ice. So that's hence the reason why with this grant to get a concrete surface, um, hopefully we're approved. And we can get a concrete surface and fix the port, fix the whole, basically rebuild the whole rink.
Rebuild, rebuild the rink.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Uh, the other, uh, uh, question, uh, uh, with respect to, uh, um, you know, the, uh, the pathway, um, you know, running along, uh, park and, uh, and then, uh, you know, from the parking lot, uh, towards County Road 21, the new asphalt surface there. Um, I, I've had people ask me, uh, you know, why we cut the grass, um, in that area. We've got a nice walking path. And, um, and particularly on the lakeside, you know, as the county with the shoreline preservation by law discussion has really been, you know, lots of messages encouraging natural shorelines. And we've got a few bushes right along the shoreline that were put in a few years ago to deal with, uh, Canada geese. But, um, um, why do we cut that grass?
I don't know if Andrea can answer that, uh, Tamara, maybe.
Well, I think, uh, Counselor Smith, you're right, there have been improvements related to the Canada geese. And part of that was the naturalization of the shoreline as they, as you see it now. There's quite a wide buffer there compared to what there used to be several years ago. Um, I, I don't know the full answer. That could just be a service level on what councils, uh, desire in terms of looks. And there might be things around tick management and things like that. I know some people don't like walking in long grass because of other issues around things like that, but I don't know for sure. That's something. If council has a desire to grow grass, we could talk about, or grow more shoreline.
Well, on the, you know, the lake associations always say to people, uh, you know, don't do so much work. Just let the grass grow. If you got, uh, you got a lawn, um, and, and so, um, oh, you, you might even trim a couple of feet on each side of the asphalt pathway. But do we need to, uh, cut the grass, you know, right down to the edge of those bushes? Cause that buffer isn't that wide. Those, uh, bushes that we're putting for the Canada geese, particularly as you go up towards the high school. And, um, and so, uh, maybe you can check with those, you know, the guys who are doing the work. But, uh, it may be a little more efficient, uh, for them if they didn't have quite as much grass to cut and the irregular shape along the bushes. And, uh, uh, just let it be a little more natural.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Smith. I think, um, you know, we know from the CHA and, and other information too, that, that grass really has a very uh, shallow root system. So it doesn't, letting the grass grow probably isn't the best solution. If we wanted to do some further shrubs, uh, like some of the ones they call the carbon, common nine bark that do, um, have the big long root system and, and increase that buffer along there, it would, uh, that would be something that I definitely think we could look into. Um, but it is a park. And I know that sort of you have to then balance the greater good of the parklands and people with dogs and little kids, and we do run around on the grass and therefore we cut it. It's absolutely zero fertilizer would as ever use there. But, and we did increase that buffer quite a bit, but doesn't mean we couldn't increase it more on the water side. Um, that I, I, and but I think with proper, um, uh, consultation, not just letting grass grow. I don't think that's a great option, actually. I think we should look at possibly increasing it with, with the correct types of plantings that would have better root system. I don't know if other councillors want to weigh in on that, or we're sort of off-topic a little bit from the park status update, but. I think it's something that we can consider. Let's, let's keep that in our thoughts, uh, and, and remember that we do have a, the park status, uh, update. So if I could just get a mover in a second of that report and we'll then go on to the doggy park, Counselor Clark, Counselor Smith. Wrote wrong name. Uh, it resulted the committee, the whole receives the parks update as information. All in favor? Carrie, and then the doggy park, yes, it's up, it's built, it's amazing. Deputy Mayor Kennedy, anything you want to add to that? Go ahead.
Congrat- congratulations, that's one on my bucket list I could check off. Um, just, uh, Adrian, great job and to the staff as well. I just wanted, can we have some directional signage, since it is a brand-new thing, uh, from both sides, just to say, you know, new. Uh, check out, if you're walking your dog, we do have now an off-leash dog park. So just want to thank everyone that's been involved with this project. Uh, great news. Thank you.
What helped? That we had some grant money to do that with. It's actually a lot bigger than I thought. I was thinking, oh, you know, we'd only get for like little small dogs. But if you had a, you know, medium-sized to large dog, it's, it's sufficient. And, um, so she does have a, the, the sort of rules. Uh, any comment to some of the rules or some of the graphic that could be put on there? Uh, to that, anybody? The, the, the wording, it looked fine to me, but, uh, you know, I would, I would, we need our corporate seal and we need the, or corporate, uh, you know, our crest. We don't have a logo. Um, and, uh, maybe a cute little doggy picture or something. I'd love when we do have the sign up and the locks are off to do a little bit of a PR. So maybe you could, uh, find somebody with a dog and invite the press and do a little bit of a, a press release on that, if that's okay.
I can do that. I also, um, I'll put, I haven't put it on our website yet. I was waiting until it was open. I figured I didn't want to put it up there yet. And, um, so as soon as it's open, I will have it announced on there and share it with social media and, uh, with our radio stations and everything.
That's great. Any comments on the wording? wording looks good. Okay. Fun for the little doggies to meet their friends and be off-leash. Um, and so I'll look for a mover in a second or for this. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark. It resulted the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the proposed signage for the off-leash dog park as written. All in favor? Carrie. And the fee structure for washrooms.
Yes. So this one, um, this is something that we definitely need to, um, hammer down. Because as you know, uh, the government's announcing, the province has announced that hopefully we are into a much more normal state in 2022. Uh, they anticipate the removal of certain restrictions that we are currently in and dealing with. Um, as a result of those announcements too, I've had more event organizers asking me about park use for, for next summer. Um, so this, this is coming forward today. Uh, as you can see, um, with the recommendation, it's, we're not looking for to make changes to the fee bylaw until February. That gives a chance to go through the budget process and everything. But in February, I'm hoping that we have the wording and the pricing down so we can move it forward. And anybody booking an event has enough leeway and time to understand what they're committing to. Um, I did contact, I did put in a, a question or query out to, um, the mu- the municipal events, uh, planners network to see if anyone else had fee structures in place for washrooms in their public parks where there's events. Um, a lot of them have kind of like privies or porta potties, so they, they, they're just open. They don't charge a fee for that. But if an event has, uh, is, if they need, require more for the event attendance and they have the event organizer rent porta potties just like we have done in the past, um, some of them do have, uh, one, one community, they have a, um, not a welcome center, but they have flushing toilets, but they only have two of them in their parks. So when there's an event or something where there's a huge draft, people, they actually walk them and make everybody, including their town events, rent porta potties just so, yeah. So, so there's varying degrees across the board. Um, Shepherd Environmental, currently right now, I had, I, I contacted them to see what the cost is to rent one porta potty for the weekend. Cause that's, um, basically who, who services us. And at the moment, the current rate is $245 for a weekend. They don't have a daily rate. Um, so when we were looking at the fee structure, that's where, uh, the numbers come from. But, uh, like I said, I'm open to suggestions or, or anything. Our current operating hours are in the summer months. So from Victoria Day to September 30th are from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And traditionally, what we found this year is that we have the interior washroom open plus two exterior washrooms. If staff noticed the park was getting busy and the requirement was there, like if there were people lining up and the lineup was getting, uh, a bit large, they would open up additional washrooms. Um, and, and base it that way. We try to gauge it because we don't necessarily want to clean all six, seven, have staff cleaning them because that takes more time. Um, so that's how that's working. And then at this time of the year, the washrooms are open from, or the center itself is open from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Um, so the fee structure, I put in, I put in information about how it's set up in the current park use agreement with wash. So the fee structure, I put in, I put in information about how it's set up in the current park use agreement with washrooms and how you determine how many washrooms are required for an event. A lot of these are, if an event is more than three hours in duration and there's, and or there's food or, or beverages being served, then there's a formula. And these formulas are fairly standard across the board, um, from what I've discovered. So you, you can see, um, if you're looking at maybe an event with three hundred to five hundred people, you need five toilets available. Always, as always, uh, the privies do count towards this number. Um, but then knowing that we have nice flush toilets, somebody might just choose to ignore the privies and just think they're an additional um, thing. So looking at the costs, we were trying to figure out how to recuperate staff costs. Um, because once we get into opening up additional washrooms, that requires more cleaning supplies, more staff to help. Not, not as, sometimes more staff to help with cleaning or just more staff hours in the cleaning. Um, as well as if we're asking like if an event's running till eleven o'clock at night, we need more staff in place. So we're looking to recover the fees of having to have staff stay at the welcome center till nine PM or eleven PM when they would normally be off at five, between five and five thirty. So there's a chart there. Like I said, I'm open to suggestions or, and maybe we just charge a flat rate. And it doesn't matter how many washrooms you have, this is the flat rate. If you're having an event, here's the flat rate. So there's, there's that option too. Open it up for questions or suggestions.
Yeah, um, that's great. Okay, let's see what people's comments are here. Uh, Councilor Clark and then Council, Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, um, yeah, no, to me it makes sense, but you've done, we've done Andrea, the, um, you know, if, if there's a certain number that are required, then that also translates the amount of work and upkeep that's made, that's the best reason, that's necessary. So yeah, it's, you know, what you've outlined is good. I, I agree with what you've got there.
Yeah, this is meant to be a cost recovery, not to make money. And absolutely. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, ju- just clarification, Andrea. Um, when during, uh, events that occur during regular operating hours, you've got one, but we already have three open, do we? Normally, so this is one more?
This is one more. You'll notice the chart goes from one to four. So we normally would have um, three open normally. So this is if they're getting into the upper numbers where they have like three hundred plus people or so, then they need to have more washroom available. Yeah, they could also say that they're just going to use the privies. So then we keep them locked and people can complain to the event organizer why there's, you know, why, why, why are these washrooms locked? Well, you know, there, we might get that question too. So that's how the chart was set up. I also set it up too. So if an event is going outside of regular operating hours, they pay the higher rate. They won't be paying both rates, they'll just pay the higher rate. Uh.
And I think, yeah, that's a great idea because we, our, our staff are not there. I've also had comments of why we don't open uh, till the bathrooms till ten o'clock if there's staff there at nine. Do you want to speak to that?
So the reason why is even though our staff are there, the park staff or the cleaners haven't had necessarily a chance to come in and do the deep cleaning that takes place. So um, some days the washrooms haven't been cleaned until nine forty five in the morning. And that's why um, we open them at ten AM. Uh, then we know that they're clean and then our, this welcome center staff do their checks throughout the day and, and keep record of that as well. So um, that would be the main reason that they're not open any earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that. Um, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, you ready to, and then Councilor Smith?
Yeah, just wondering if we could revisit that during budget time? If, uh, I've been hearing the same issues about opening the, the washrooms earlier in the day? And if there's an opportunity here to change or, I think more suited to budget time than today's discussion. Look at it, expanding the hours of the park.
It might be budget, but it might just be really operational and that the amount of staff, uh, park staff that we have. Um, so it, we don't have anyone on screen to be able to answer that right now. So I'm not sure if it's budget or operational, but I think we, we are putting that question out there. Andrea?
It's more from an operation, I, well, Barbara can comment to this too. Um, I know it came up during some of the preliminary budget discussions, but I think it's more from an operational standpoint. Cause they do their garbage loop on, on Highland Street first. And sometimes that takes them quite a while, but the garbages are getting, they're getting more and more in there. And sometimes even just the, the Headlake Park and the Highland Street gets two truckloads of garbage and first thing in the morning, and then they have to go do the washrooms. So um, it's just, a- and then in the, within the winter months too, it's a snow clearing is their first, making sure the, the walkways and the doorways are, are clean. That's their first and foremost priority. And then, then the washrooms. So it's, I think more operational, but something worth, you can, we can still discuss.
Oh, yeah. And I think really in terms of the garbages on the main street, they have to do that when the, when there's the least amount of cars parked there. So that has to get done first. Uh, like you said, that, that's taking longer, particularly in the summer months. And we do have the outhouse open. It's not that if someone was in town at nine thirty, generally events take place later. Generally people start coming in to town a little bit later. So you know, the ten o'clock time, but we will, we can check, but it is, I think, an operational thing. Anyway, so there is a recommendation. Was there someone else? I'm sorry. Yes, Councilor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so uh, Andrea, you made a comment there at the end that uh, I just wanted to clarify. The, the, the rate chart here for four uh, washrooms, the hundred and seventy five dollars for regular operating hours and then three hundred and fifty dollars. That's not in addition to the one seventy five, then that's in place of the one seventy five. Is that correct? So you get four extra washrooms uh, open for six hours for a hundred and seventy five dollars. Right? The difference between the one seventy five and the three fifty is that one seventy five. I, I mean, you know, and, and I'm happy to wait until we go through the budget uh, details. But um, I was thinking that that was uh, uh, one seventy five plus three fifty, if you had those extra hours. And if you, if you're not doing it that way, I'd be surprised if it's even cost recovery um, to, to kind of staff for six hours and deal with the uh, not just the hourly cost, the extra cleaning that'll be involved, the expense for that and vehicles and so forth. Um, so you know, we don't know right now all the details of, of what the visitor center staffing and uh, washroom cleaning and so forth is taking. So um, I'm fearful that it doesn't need to be a profit center, but I'm fearful it's not even going to be cost recovery uh, at that approach. And um, so uh, to the deputy mayor's comments, I'm happy to leave it. Nothing finalized right now until we get through the budget. Um, may need to be higher, particularly when you get into those extra hours.
Andrea?
And that's exactly why I brought it forward now, so it can be discussed over budget. And then we can get through the budget process, make the tweet, the changes that we need to, to the fee structure and then have it ready to present in February. So please during budget or, or, or send comments and we can, I can present other options as well, so.
I think uh, what would be really helpful too is to sort of do the math on a large event such as um, Councilor Clark, maybe you could take this to the Real Zane Gallery when they're having their arts and crafts and they have seven thousand people in the park over three days, like what's this costing? And are we, though, let's use some larger events. I was thinking um, can really fingers crossed that the um, Rotary Club goes back to doing the music in the park program, but that's a two hour event. That said, they might still want to have some of the bathrooms open and then there's a charge there. So you know, we, like, let's look at some of the actual scenarios, do the math on them and then you have time to comment. Okay, so right now we're just uh, receiving the report. And that she'll bring the report back. It doesn't mean that this is finalized, we can make changes. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder. Councilor Clark and then seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. Beer result that the committee, the whole receives this report as information and further recommends that staff bring this report forward with changes to the fee by law and the park use agreement for the February twenty twenty two committee, the whole meeting. All in favor? Okay, carried. I'm just looking where we're at with the clock and where we're at in our agenda. I think we have time to do uh, the museum and then the building and by law, and then we would break for lunch. Does that suit everybody? Okay, so we'll bring, oh, there's Kate already. Hello, Kate.
Hello.
Okay, take it away.
So yeah, in terms of uh, operations at the museum, uh, we're certainly, we've been seeing a, a busy autumn, um, which is, which is great. And I'm, as I mentioned before, I think like last year, you know, everyone's year has shifted a little bit throughout the COVID pandemic because we've often had lockdowns in the spring and early summer. So everyone's just trying to, to get everything they can uh, out of the autumn. And while days like today are, are great for, for people wanting to be out and about and exploring, exploring locally uh, in their own backyard, in their own area. But with the way that we're seeing things going in terms of some of the loosening of restrictions and the, the long-term um, plans that we're hearing from the provincial government about where things are, are heading. It definitely means that we're going to have more opportunities in, in the coming months to, you know, bring back in person, more in-person programming and, and just get things closer, closer to where we want them to, to be again, as things open up. And we're seeing that in terms of um, visitors to the museum as well. You, everyone is, is looking to get back to that, um, to that quote unquote normal, um, or perhaps even a better normal, a better normal, let's put it that way. So yeah, it's, it's exciting and it's, it's a good feeling to be going into the winter with. Um, and then you know, twenty twenty two, bring it on.
Okay, Kate, one of the things we brought, talked about when we were doing some um, pre-budget meetings too, was we still have copies of the book, um, Halliburton History and Pictures, which Museum Committee did, you know, many years ago, over ten years ago, I believe. Two thousand eight. So uh, but it's still relevant. It's a, it's a fabulous, nice hardcover uh, coffee table book. And I believe we're going to try, start selling them at the um, Welcome Center.
Yes, yeah, that's definitely another avenue. I mean, we certainly, um, we sell them through Masters Bookstore already. Um, we sell them here, we sell them at the, the municipal office. But yeah, the Welcome Center is going to be another great opportunity uh, to share them out there uh, in the community. And yep, it's just, just twenty five dollars for a, a glimpse into Halliburton's history.
Great. Any questions for Kate? Just uh, mover second or to receive a report, please. Uh, Councilor Clark and seconded by Councilor Smith. We resolved that the uh, Committee of the Whole acknowledges receipt of the Halliburton Highlands Museum Report. All in favor? Okay, Carrie? Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring in Carl and Robert. Morning, Carl.
Morning.
Robert, hello there. How are you both? Good. Okay, so the first up, uh, Carl, we have is your building permit activity report for the month of October twenty twenty one and it's big numbers again.
Yeah, it, it's, it's kind of consistent. So October was a, was a little bit slower. But if you look at the uh, permit fees we took in, it's just consistent. We're taking in a lot of permit fees because the projects are uh, are, are big projects. Um, that's uh, that's one of the items that I keep looking at is the, the permit fees taken in compared to the number of permits in the, the twenty twenty one values are, are significantly up. Otherwise, that's the only comment I have for the, the permit report.
Okay, any questions on the building permit report? I guess I, I say every month, it's good news for Dyserd, especially a couple of years down the road as these projects get finished and impact gets caught up, et cetera. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
I want to compliment you, Carl, and your staff, but I'm not hearing any, any complaints lately. So obviously the new uh, software is working and uh, uh, everything's going well. So congratulations to you and your staff. Thanks.
We, we, we actually don't have the software in place yet. There's a lot of.
Okay, well, whatever you're doing is working.
We're working on it, hopefully for the new year.
Okay.
Well, and also to, you know, to newer staff as building inspectors and every month that they continue, they're learning to grow and they're getting more confident. And so uh, so maybe one day Carl can actually take a holiday. So what do you take, take a holiday in November? You don't need to be at Committee the Whole next week. He's, well, yeah, he's still too busy. Anyway, mover second or to uh, receive uh, Councilor Smith and Councilor Clark. We resolved that the committee, the whole received the October twenty twenty one building permit activity report as information. All in favor? Okay, carried. And next is the uh, bylaw update, Robert?
Good morning. Uh, report's pretty straightforward. Uh, any comments or concerns or questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Councilor Smith?
Just a question for you, Robert. Um, power of procedure on property standards complaints. I get lots of verbal ones about a property close to where I live, but I'm not sure on how to tell people to proceed or what the next steps are, is what can be publicized or not as far as, are they meeting standards or? And a lot of this is confidential, so just sort of stumbling here for words to find it, what the best process and updates are on specific properties.
Sorry, like are you, you, you asking then, you want to tell them how to proceed to talk to me?
Yeah, basically a, a number of complaints about property very close to here where I live. And uh, um, they keep asking us, what are we doing about it? Like, well, I believe everything is working the way it's supposed to, cause we're not seeing any coming back to council. But is that enough or is there, sorry?
Because I would, I would let your constituents know there that uh, on our website too, if they have access to the internet and the, and the website, if they go to the reported concern page, uh, we've added bylaw enforcement under that report.
Okay.
Um, and they can submit it, uh, a complaint there, which is emailed directly to me. So it, it's, it's a, it's a form that's nicely set up and it gives me uh, everything that I need to know. A bit of description, they can upload photos and everything as well if they've taken photos. So it's uh, it's an email that gets right to me and then I will contact them within, uh, I try within one or two business days to say, hey, listen, I've, I've re, I've uh, received your report and we, we'll open an investigation to that property. And then uh, they're, they're more than welcome to, to uh, um, email me back further and, and ask for updates every once in a while. And I'll do my best to uh, give them uh, an update. And obviously uh, everything has remained confidential. Uh, I don't give the, like the violator, any but, any, any information on the complaint. It comes in that we've received a complaint and that's it, as far as, you know. Having said that, there's, sometimes there's, there's situations where I know in the past, um, people have guessed, but I don't give that information out. I don't confirm nor deny that uh, that info.
Okay, and Carl, I saw you had your hands up, but that, that said, once a complaint has been made, what is the follow-up to, no, and I know, do you report back to council? Do you report back? So Carl, if you want to speak to that, there is a property in standards and sign committee that uh, reviews some of the complaints as well. But um, so we know that there is a complaint on this property and then what's the follow-up? So I don't know whether you or Carl want to go with that.
I just wanted to clarify from uh, Pat's question, is this a, a property that there have been complaints issued against? And they just want to know what the status is of it and uh?
Yes.
I believe so, Carl. That's, it's already on record, but there doesn't seem to be any action being taken or?
Yeah, pretty sure we know which, which property this is. Yeah, it's, I know that, that Rob has a lot of involvement in that property and it's uh, um, yeah, we, we do investigate and I know Rob does uh, I'll look at it from the property standard by law. And again, any openings or if the building is, is accessible, all those doors, windows have to be boarded up and make, make, maintaining that the, the grass gets cut, those types of things. I know that Rob does follow up on those ones. Uh, whether, I'm not sure, Rob, if you want to explain how you follow up with the actual people who complain about it?
Um, if, if, I would usually call them or send them an email. Um, and, and just tell them basically what I've seen and, and what I've done. Um, if I put any other orders on top of the property or, or been in contact with the owners and, and spoken to them that way. I mean, that's, I, I don't usually bring them back to council. Um, unless council requests me to bring it back. But other than that, yeah, I would, I would, I can contact the uh, the constituents who've, who've made that, filed that complaint.
Okay, and I referenced the property and standards and sign committee. The purpose of that committee is if somebody received a property standards order, an individual or a business, and they wanted to appeal it or request extension on the order date or something that has happened in the past, uh, then that, the committee would review that and, and uh, that type of thing. But um, there is no real mechanism. This is a very large property and it's an eyesore for everybody to see. So there is a desire to know what is happening with that property in particular. That is why. Um, Councilor Smith, you had your hand up a while back. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. And, and uh,
Yeah, thank you, and, and uh, uh, Robert, eh, you know, I really appreciate the uh, the additional information you've added to this report uh, in terms of uh, you know, the number of complaints that have been resolved and those that are still open. And uh, you know, uh, Deputy Mayor has asked about the property standards. Uh, I note for zoning and uh, and also encroachment, there's actually more complaints that are still open than have been resolved. And um, um, you know, it's late in the year, some of these complaints came in quite a while ago. Is there anything that we could be doing to, to bring these things to resolution a little quicker?
I could tighten the chains on everything. Um, usually what I try to do is I try to work with everybody and give them their time, a timeline based on what I, I think the even what is appropriate. Um, they come with me with their requests for extensions. And if I even, you know, if, if I think that they, it, it's an accept, pardon me, I can't speak today. An acceptable timeframe, then I, I will go with it and, and have them cleared up. Um, I know a car last week, a couple of complaints were cleared up, which was very great to see and, and, and whatnot. And takes a load off my chest for, for complaints that are still open. But uh, it, it is a time-consuming thing and, and it's not something that can be done right quickly. Uh, as far as I, I, I think um uh, I do my very best to try to get these going. But I mean, we can try to tighten the reins down and, and go that way. But I do have a lot on, on my plate and I'm not trying to make any excuses or anything. But I can do my very best to try to bring them down.
That's fair enough, I do see Carl have his hand up, is it okay, Councillor Smith? I don't know if you're finished, but I just, I think Carl wants to add to the answer.
I had had to follow up comments, but let Carl go ahead, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, so we do uh provide Rob direction not to be overly, overly heavy-handed. Uh, again, we try to provide people with voluntary measures to bring property into compliance. With zoning, it get becomes, uh, it does become drag, it does drag out. Because we, a lot of times they will seek the process of applying for a variance to have, you know, certain things in place to become legal. Uh, and that in itself is a very timely, uh, minimum of three months process at least. So, so those are some of the reasons uh why we're dealing with those as well. The, one of the other items is um, uh, so the, the enforcement measure, again, we, we do proceed down the enforcement measure, but it, it is a very timely process as well. So even if we do charge somebody with that uh offense, it's a year before it, and anything gets resolved. So uh, those are, those are some of the reasons why we're having those issues uh with, with zoning.
Councillor Smith, follow up?
And thanks, it's, you know, it's just uh, uh discouraging to see uh some of these things that drag on. And, and Robert, this is not to criticize the work you're doing. And, you know, I, I accept these can be difficult, but you did, uh, when I asked a couple of months ago about the number of uh why there were so many uh, you know, complaints around zoning. And you gave a one-word answer and that word was trailers. Um, and uh, so I understand some things can take a while, but it doesn't take that long. If somebody's got a trailer where it shouldn't be, uh, somebody's utilizing a trailer where they shouldn't be using a trailer. It's not that hard to, seems to me anyway, to get it addressed and, you know, it's on wheels, get it out of here. Uh, wherever it may be, where it's off limits. Um, and uh, and so I just, you know, uh, uh, hope we can see the, you know, the open numbers uh, and it come down quicker.
Okay, I think Robert's doing his best, uh, Carl, one last comment and we'll?
Yeah, just uh, one last comment on the zoning issue, we're gonna, what we're seeing uh just recently is uh, is these uh private cabins or bunkies with the upper loft in them. Um, basically they're being sold by a company or companies that claim no building permits required because they're less than ten square meters. But loft areas and overhanging porch and definitely it's, they're over ten square meters. We're starting to see a lot of these or a few of them, they seem to be taking up a lot of our time right now. Uh, so just giving council some um in, basically heads up that these things are, are gonna be, uh, we're gonna start coming down on these things. And uh, you might start getting complaints that we're, you know, trying to enforce things that uh, that they've been told they don't build in permits for. Just uh, just as a heads up.
Oh, thank you for that and, and uh, you know, uh, you're not here later, but with the uh planning report, it seems every month uh, that the planning reports uh give us an indication of somebody having an illegal structure, one that has, has not been permitted. And it leaves one wondering, and your example, Carl, of, of another type of building. Um, do we need a bigger penalty that gets people's attention? They say, look, and if you're gonna go ahead and build a cabin or a monkey or whatever, uh, without a building permit. Um, you know, there's a bigger penalty when we do uh catch up with you. And uh, um, you know, right now it's kind of an inconvenience for them. Oh, I got caught, I'll have to pay double the regular building fee, but it's not, not, maybe not enough to get the right behavior.
I don't know if the municipal building code precludes us from how we charge.
Yeah, uh, uh, the, the bigger penalty would be uh court action, which again, uh, it's up to a fifty thousand dollar fine at that point for the first offense. Then up to a hundred thousand for a second offense. Those are when you get the bigger fines. But again, those are the core process where again, it's very timely, very time-consuming for our staff. We don't have time to do that other than during the winter time. Um, yeah, it's, you, you're absolutely right, John, there, there are bigger penalties out there for people that do create, you know, that, that creating problems. Um, you know, there's, where it's a simpler one, a doubling of permit fee, it's a bit of a yeah, it's, it's a bit of a joke, but it, it is what it is, it's, it's what we can do right now.
People should always be very, they're told by
Sorry, just gonna say the law-abiding citizens get discouraged when they, they see so many violations. And uh, and particularly when they go on for so long, it, it appears that we're not enforcing our own bylaws as to the degree we should.
And I think we're doing our best though, Councillor Smith, and I think the problem is, uh, you know, we unless we're gonna hire a whole nother bile officer just to deal with those, uh, that's, that's a, a whole nother kettle of fish, they're happening, they're all over people, should not necessarily be, leave a salesman that says you don't need a building permit. You know, they should be checking, that's the, their problem, you don't need a, you don't need a building permit for one of those things, your cars go under in the winter. That's a structure, so you don't need a building permit because this little bunky's under square feet. No, it's not, because we count square feet as the second level too, and so you're over and they're not permitted. Anyway, be deeper conversation, I'm trying to, my, I've got a little tummy growl happening here, so I'm gonna ask for a mover and a seconder. You'll hear it on the microphone any second. Uh, Councillor Donaldson is moving and Councillor, uh Deputy Mayor Kennedy is seconding. We resolved that the Committee of the Whole acknowledges receipt of the October twenty twenty-one bylaw update report, all in favor? Okay, carried, thank you. And lastly, the exotic uh animal bylaw that you, we were asked you to get information on and, and possible paths, and you've had some responses and I don't know, if you wanna comment to the responses or they're there for us to read? If council wants to comment, uh, do we wanna go further with this? Do we wanna take out snakes and turtles? I don't know.
So I'm just basically asking for staff direction from here on and, and uh, on how they would like me to uh develop the, the bylaw.
I'm gonna throw that right back out at the floor, he's looking for direction, anybody, I, I Councillor Smith?
Oh, uh, thank you, uh, um, you know, I, I mean, obviously didn't draw a lot of uh reaction, uh, whether that's an awareness issue or uh uh, or something else, or maybe a lack of concern. Uh, but it's interesting that um, you know, uh, of the three people that did forward, um, nobody uh said gee, um, you know, we need this bylaw with an extensive list. Uh, they all looked at the list and, and said, uh, wow, um, why is, why you've got all these things on it? And um, and so if, if I recall, or I do recall, this uh, this bylaw a draft that got forward was as a result of a single letter expressing a concern about uh, you know, lions and tigers. Um, and um, you know, uh, even some of these comments here. Um, you know, do say, well, maybe you need something for lions and tigers, but we don't need something that uh, you know, prohibits uh um, many of the, uh, of the species that were in your draft. Um, so uh, um, you know, personally, I'm not, it, we've just talked about the challenges we have with current bylaws. I'm not sure that we're uh, we're attacking a major issue here. Um, and so I'm fine if there's no new bylaw. But if there is gonna be one, I would uh, I would certainly advocate for a really short list of uh, of uh critters on it. Uh, maybe lions and tigers, but uh, there's a lot of other things that people seem to consider quite acceptable. And if somebody points out all the risks associated with dogs and cats and we haven't tackled them, so if this goes the way, I'm good with it.
We did update our canine bylaw, but lions and tigers and bears. Anyway, I was gonna say, oh my, that's, um, you know, I, the last person's comment number three says, uh, you know, we have a hard enough time managing, regulating our current bylaws and keeping up infrastructure lands, et cetera. I, I I'm hesitant to pass a bylaw. So that's my, I, I believe Councillor Smith is feeling the same way. Is there anyone that we, that is in favor of continuing to review a bylaw? No. Okay, so I do have a resolution to accept this survey results as information. Should we add an Mallory for this date of the record and further that the Committee of the Whole recommends to council to not pursue the development of a exotic animal bylaw?
That sounds perfect.
Okay, so I just read that. Is everybody okay with what I read? I'm getting a little bit tired there, I don't know why I said, so, you know, be resolved, the Committee of the Whole accepts exotic animals bylaw survey results as information. And further that the Committee of the Whole recommends to council to not pursue passing a bylaw, an exotic animal bylaw at this time. All in favor? Oh, wait, I need a second, I need lunch, sorry, yes, okay.
So what we're saying, that any, anybody can bring any animal into uh, into our community.
There's other regulations, there's federal and provincial, federal regulations too over, over endangered species, that kind of thing. That probably would capture something that we are, don't seem in favor of pursuing a bylaw at this time, an exotic animal bylaw at our level.
Okay.
So if I could have a mover and a second or before I call the vote, that'd be good. Councillor Clark and Councillor Smith? And I did read it, I remember that, so I will ask for a favor, a vote, all in favor? Okay, that carries. Uh, so at this time, I'm gonna call for a lunch recess. And uh, I, sometimes we only take thirty minutes, but we don't have a lot coming back. So I'm actually gonna suggest that we take a forty-minute break, which gives staff a little bit of time, there's only one microwave here. And uh, so at that, what time are we at now? Twelve fifteen, so actually, is it okay if we come back at one o'clock? Give everybody a decent lunch, go get some fresh air. Okay, so we'll reconvene at one o'clock, we're in recess. Okay, so we are back from our lunch recess and we have a few more sections in our open session and the next section here is planning and land information. So we're gonna bring forward uh Jeff today with three items. I said it's only three items, but every single one, there'll be some conversation, I'm sure. So let's wait till I see Jeff on screen. Okay, hi Jeff, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great, okay, so the first item is we're returning with this uh request for purchase of the open road allowance. Open road allowance, you wanna speak to what you found out?
Yes, thank you, uh, council first reviewed this request at their meeting in October. At that meeting, council requested additional information and, and provided direction to staff to visit the site to determine the topography of the road allowance. The pictures provided don't necessarily do justice for the, the topography uh in this area, it is quite steep. Um, and based on that, the topography used as a recreational trail, um, at least a trail originating from the lake is unlikely. In terms of servicing though, I thought I'd provide this information. Um, in two thousand fifteen, Bell Can, Canada contacted the municipality about potentially using this road allowance for underground cable. Um, we've rec, con, tried to contact Bell uh to request comment, but we have not uh yet received a response. Um, it should be noted that Bell is included on all circulations related to the conveyance of road allowances. So if, if council chooses to proceed um with this file, um, Bell will be circulated. Um, as per, as requested attached, um, is the Lake Health Report for Redstone Lake um by C H A. Um, as per the report, the natural shoreline, naturalized shoreline along Redstone Lake is roughly sixty-eight percent. Um, and we've included a map uh that shows the location of the municipal boat launches um in the vicinity. Um, staff request direction from council how they wish to proceed it. And we've provided two resolutions for uh, for council's uh consideration today.
Okay, and just uh, I'll open it to the floor, just for uh clarification, is this a joint application or is this just the one side?
It's not a joint application at this point. Um, if council chooses to proceed, um, staff will ask the applicant to contact the neighbor on the opposite side of the road allowance. Um, and as per municipal policy, they are, are required to uh see if they want to use or buy that other half. So if they're interested at that point, it would become a different application.
Okay, so that's how it works, because we couldn't sell it to these people without them ensuring with written confirmation that they either are, do wanna participate and they split it thirty-three feet or that they don't want any part of it and it completely goes, if we deem it that we wanna sell it, it goes to the um applicants that are applying.
As per policy, that's how we've historically proceeded. Ultimately, it is up to council's sole discretion how they wanna, if they wanna sell the entire thing to one property owner.
Um, okay, so let's open it up to the floor, we have the more information, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, usually I'm not in favor of selling road allowances, as you know, uh, but this one may present an opportunity. Is there, is there a way of um putting on record that utility, there may be an easement for utilities, like a three-meter? I see that quite a bit at Land Division where, but it may be that Bell is asking at the time of a split rather than us saying you asked in twenty fifteen, you didn't get back to us then, but can we provide for future in, in this, i- if utilities actually do need access to the, to the lake to provide services? I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, historically, we've been able to provide easements for these requests where there's existing infrastructure so that the surveyor is able to determine that location and provide the, the necessary easements. Um, providing a location for a potential future easement would be a bit more difficult because they need to, to provide locates where they wanna
They lay it right where it is, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and given the topography, i- it does seem like it, it is quite steep. It's a hundred feet up probably to the road and, and continues up beyond that. Um, it might be difficulty be, to use for, for burying cable as well, there's a lot of rock. But uh, I guess that's the difficulty. So if, if council chooses to proceed, we're gonna ask the applicant to provide a survey. And then we're gonna send that survey to Bell and see if they have any issues. If they do have interest, it might uh impose a, an additional cost on the applicant because they may have to go back and survey an easement into that to, to proceed. So yeah, ideally, it's nice to know that beforehand, but the way things are set up currently, i- it's, that's not how it is.
Okay, um, I think, did I see further questions, you, Councillor Smith?
Yeah, thank you, um. So uh, Jeff, the, the reason this request has come in is that uh, the property owner is interested in developing their lot to a, a greater extent than would be normal?
That's, that's, seems to be it, yeah, they wish to use the entire property for development. So by purchasing that, they might have some additional land and, and reduce setbacks from an ex, it would become an ex, an interior side lot line setback as opposed and, and reduce setbacks from an, it would become an ex, an interior side lot line setback as opposed to an exterior side lot line setback. So, yeah, that's, that's correct.
Okay. Um, you know, uh, like the deputy mayor, I, uh, I have a lot of concerns about selling, um, the, uh, this, uh, this lot, this any road allowance, so the, uh, natural shoreline. Um, you know, uh, with the discussion at the county level, uh, with respect to, uh, the shoreline preservation bylaw. Um, been talking with a lot of owners about, uh, shoreline preservation and the nature of the bylaw and so forth. Certainly, one of the concerns that's been expressed to me is that, uh, in the municipality, um, you know, often doesn't, um, invest in natural shorelines itself. Uh, and they point to examples where we've sold off waterfront property and including road allowances like this. And, uh, you know, here's sixty-six feet. It may not be suitable for a boat launch at any point in time, but it is sixty-six feet of, uh, of natural shoreline. Uh, and, um, and once we sell it, and once you sell it, it's forever and ever. Um, you know, the, uh, the opportunity for additional development, uh, increases. And, um, and so to me, um, you know, it, it sends a strong message. If we sell these things or if we don't sell them, if we keep them and say, no, it's not a lot of property, but it is some property on many lakes. Most lakes would have one or more, um, you know, size of Redstone, it'll have a few road allowances. And, um, and so by keeping those, it's a demonstration that our municipality, our, our council that is important to, uh, preserving natural shorelines to the, uh, the degree that we can, uh, with property we own. And, um, you know, there may be a little bit of revenue that comes from it, but frankly, in the overall scheme of things, it's a pretty small amount of revenue. And it's a one-time, uh, you know, cash injection that, uh, um, you know, we might be better to, uh, to go without that and, uh, and, you know, get the equivalent amount of money on an ongoing basis through, uh, increased property values, values that are probably enhanced uh, by a greater portion of natural shoreline, uh, on our lakes. So, uh, um, to me, it's not just looking at our, the provisions of our current zoning bylaw. I think that, uh, council should be, uh, um, you know, looking at that, uh, uh, zoning bylaw, official plan and saying to ourselves, no, we're going to keep these things. And only in extraordinary circumstances would we ever sell a road allowance on, uh, um, you know, on a, uh, on a lake and any of that natural shoreline. And so let's, let's keep this. Let's see, to me, the right answer here is to say no and say no in almost every case. Uh, as I said, it would make an extraordinary situation to, uh, to justify, uh, one of these sales. So, uh, I'm happy to receive the report, but not happy about, uh, any possibility of selling the land. See the condition of Redstone, sixty-eight percent natural lines. That's only going to go down if we, uh, if we sell, uh, a property like this. Thank you.
Okay, um, so that said, I forget which counselor it was, said at our previous meeting that we should be consistent and we did sell, uh, it's still in the works, but we did deem, uh, an open road allowance, original road allowance on Kinesis Lake not that long ago and it's in the works to sell. Uh, it hasn't closed, but it's in the works. So I, I feel that by saying no in this circumstance, that we are not being consistent. Um, the owner is still subject to all other rules and regulations, whether they build, it has to be, it's a thirty meter setback for the building envelope. There is the tree bylaw in effect. They cannot clear cut that property. And, um, likely the county will be passing some form of a shoreline preservation, uh, bylaw, site alteration bylaw, I would suspect in the new year. Uh, can't put a date on that exactly. And so, you know, I understand what you're trying to say in preserve and protect, but at the same time, we did ask staff for direction. There is a boat launch there. And there is an opportunity to sell and recoup some income. Uh, recoup some revenue and, uh, you know, put that towards a greater good somewhere else, improving boat launches, et cetera. Uh, so I just want to hear from some other people, what they're feeling. Counselor McKechnie and Counselor Clark.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you, Andrea, and especially with what Jeff said, um, the property is extreme. It's very steep and, um, I, I think that, uh, no way down the road is it going to be used for, uh, boat launch or anything like that. So I, I agree with you. We got to be consistent and and, uh, we should be selling it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor Clark?
Um, I support the idea of not selling it. I think it's, it's, it's in our official plan that we're trying to maintain as much natural shoreline as we can and, and shoreline that's owned by the township, we can actually control that. Um, so I'm, I'm not in favor of selling it. I think we should hang on to it and, and, um, add it to the inventory of, of undeveloped property on that, on that lake.
Okay. Um, I need to hear from Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Kennedy, or Deputy Mayor Kennedy, pardon me.
I, I agree with Counselor, uh, McKechnie. Um, it's not usable because it's so steep and, um, there are the bylaws already in place, so we can't, um, the shoreline is not going to change that much with the bylaws and why not, um, utilize it how we can, um, because of the topography of it?
Okay, thank you for that. You're last up, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that. Um, as I say, normally I'm not in favor of selling road allowances. I think given the topography that Jeff described, basically a hundred foot cliff development is, is near impossible on it. So the current bylaws are in place to protect, um, the natural shoreline. Then, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of selling this one, but not as a consistent approach. Each one should be, uh, reviewed on their own merit.
Yeah, each one does have to be reviewed. Um, and that said, we, at this point, all we would be doing is deeming it surplus. I, I see you, Counselor Smith, but I'm just going to finish. We deem it surplus and then we go forward with the next steps, which would be, uh, which is consistent with what we've usually done is get them to contact the neighbors, Jeff referred to surveying, et cetera. We, the, uh, applicants would be responsible for, um, uh, we, we need to, you know, how do we set a, set the value, get a Realtor's opinion? We can enter into negotiation, nothing, we're not talking money, the final dollars at this point. So there's a lot of processes, steps forward. This isn't sold yet. It's just deeming it surplus, that we aren't going to use it and it's possibly for sales. That, would that be correct, Mallory, in saying? There's other steps down the road that we could say, uh, you know, deem it surplus. I'm just going to throw it a silly number, but it's a million dollars. Now, we're not going to do that, but we, we, uh, it's just because we deem it surplus today does not mean it's sold today. Okay.
Defer to Jeff on the, on the planning process for sure. I believe that's correct, right, Jeff?
That is correct. So, um, however, it is, once we deem, once council deems it surplus, that is when the applicants will start incurring costs of surveys and, and other costs. So, um, I think council should have a pretty good, um, understanding of whether they do want to sell it, um, or not at this point before they start getting surveys and looking forward.
Yep, and Counselor Smith was waiting in the wings, so, but there was four counselors who are in favor of deeming it surplus. So I, but I do still want to hear comments so we can have more information. Go ahead, Counselor Smith.
Thank you. Uh, and so your question in district sponsors, and one of the points I wanted to raise is that based on our decision today, um, you know, the neighboring property owner will start to incur some expense. And, uh, you know, uh, you are correct that we have sold some of these in the past. Not every time it's been asked for, but there have been a couple of cases. There was one on here in cases. Uh, and, um, you know, just because we've necessarily, not necessarily, uh, you know, made a mistake, but you can change uh, your perspective and, uh, world is evolving. The wanted discussion of both shoreline preservation as a result of what's going on at the county. Even those who oppose what's going on at the county in terms of bylaw, raise this as an example. You know, you're demonstrating that shorelines aren't that important to you when you keep selling these things off. Um, maybe a hundred feet high, maybe a little less than a hundred feet high. But when you sell it, it's forever. We don't know today what recreational activities are going to exist twenty years from now, fifty years from now, whenever, beyond our lifetime. But it may be very attractive for public use at some point down the road to actually have recreation activity that, uh, has you going over a steep cliff like that into a lake or over a lake, some kind of electronic, uh, transportation device that, uh, you know, today they do it with, uh, um, you know, kites or whatever you want to call it, that those, uh, guys can jump off mountains. Um, and, uh, and so we've got a valuable public asset that just because it can't be a boat launch at any point in the future, could be something else very worthwhile to our community and an attractive feature that, um, you know, people who don't, uh, own a waterfront property, uh, or own a waterfront property like this would like to have access to. And to, so to sell it off for a few dollars as a one-time injection, as I said, to me is, is just the wrong answer. And, uh, and I encourage council to think carefully about its, uh, um, you know, leadership in saying that shorelines, natural shorelines are important and we're doing our part to preserve them.
Maybe spaceships could land there.
Okay, Counselor McKechnie. Caution. Um, I did take a poll and I did see support for deeming it surplus. Uh, is there any further information, Jeff, that you would need in the resolution, um, in terms of how we have done anything or is that, is the resolution as it stands enough? For now.
Yes, yes, the resolution as it stands, if council chooses to proceed is enough, uh, staff can take it from there.
Okay, so I would look for a mover and a second or for the resolution to deem surplus. Then Counselor McKechnie to move and seconded by Counselor Donaldson. Here is all that the committee of the whole.
Record your vote on this, please.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Here is solved that the committee of the whole recommend that council, based on the direction of section three point two point seven of the official plan, approved for processing the request by Jalen and Morris to purchase a portion of the original road allowance between lots twenty and twenty-one concession eight in the geographic township of Guilford. These lands are declared surplus. Mallory?
Hey, uh, Counselor Clarks?
Oh.
Counselor Donaldson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor McKechnie?
You're mute.
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Oh.
And Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, that carries.
Okay. And you'll add that to my resolution. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next one, which has an either or. Um, continue, Jeff.
Yes, thank you. So the next one's, uh, is a request to purchase a shore allowance. Uh, file number L O seven R O two thousand and twenty-one dash eighteen is an application by Mr. and Mrs. Tedford to purchase the shore allowance in front of their property on Grace Lake. There is currently a private cabin, tent, deck in a covered marine facility located on the subject lands. Uh, the, the deck in the marine facility appear to be located on the shore rollouts. Uh, there, there's currently no records of a building permit, um, and the property is assessed as vacant land. Uh, in addition, the, the development does not appear to comply with the zoning bylaw. Um, as per the report, section three point one A of the zoning bylaw states that the main use must be established prior to any accessory uses. Um, in addition, the two-story accessory structure is not a permitted use, um, but also not permitted, as I mentioned, prior to the main dwelling. Furthermore, a marine facility cannot have any temporary or permanent cover. So this, this structure also contravenes the bylaw. Currently, the bylaw enforcement department has issued a work order, uh, on the subject lands for the private cabin and the marine facility. As per the, the report, staff recommended condition that the development, um, be removed or brought into compliance with the zoning bylaw. Having said that, um, since the agenda was posted, there are, uh, there are a couple of updates that I'd like to provide for council's consideration. Um, as we do with all our reports, a copy of the staff report was provided to the applicant prior to the meeting, just so they're not blindsided by anything. Um, and the applicants appear to be challenging the position of staff in terms of the accessory structure and marine facility. Um, they state that the marine is, is not a marine facility, but instead of pleasure craft licensed by Transport Canada. Staff contacted Transport Canada and they did confirm that they have, they have registered this structure as a pleasure craft. Um, however, after discussion with their staff, um, we are not certain that this structure complies with the requirements of, of a pleasure craft. Um, having said that, staff are still the op, opinion that this structure is a dock or a marine facility as per the definition in the zoning bylaw. Um, this definition states that any structure attached to the ground below the high watermark, any other than rafts, or any other structure that are raft attached to the ground below the high watermark is considered a marine facility. Um, if, if this is a, this is a complicated file, um, given the uncertainty surrounding this proposal, uh, staff would like to maybe change the recommendation, uh, and recommend that council to further decision to declare these lands surplus until the bylaw department, uh, work order is resolved. In addition, council may wish to consider a resolution of some sort to support that work order and require that that illegal development be removed or brought into compliance with the zoning bylaw. It, it's a tricky, uh, file. Um, I'm happy, happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm sure you're happy to answer any questions, but I don't know if you'll be able to. This is, uh, like I said, you had three items on the planning agenda and not one is easy. So this is a very complicated situation. I don't understand. Well, we were talking to it in, in our, um, bylaw report, uh, you know, somebody said it's under the square feet. You don't need a building permit, but it, it's the total livable square feet and it's got a two-story, not permitted. Um, let's open it up by, I think I said Deputy Mayor Kennedy with the hand first.
That was just my question too. I think you clarified it. This is one of the structures that Carl was referring to earlier.
Yes, that's correct. And staff were of the opinion that these types of structures, uh, defeat the general intent of the bylaw with regards to two-story accessory structures, um, at least until we have further direction from council.
Um, Counselor, did, did you have anything for the deputy mayor? No, okay, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I, I support what Jeff is saying. Um, part of what, what we're trying to achieve with the, um, with our, our official plan is, is natural views in the shoreline and, and we've got some boathouses and those types of things that we inherited grandfathered. But we've been trying not to add any more of that to try and keep a natural look and, and actually keeping buildings back from the shoreline, that type of thing. So, um, yeah, I, I, I agree that this has got to be, uh, looked at and brought into compliance before we're able to consider, um, declaring a surplus.
Okay, uh, Counselor Smith, next.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm good with deferring this, uh, while there's some further investigation gone. I mean, um, I haven't been up to the property, but, uh, certainly looking at that photograph, I, I don't know how you call that a, uh, you know, a, a boat, which is really what the, you know, but he seems, even, uh, it's a, it's a dock by any, uh, reasonable definition, uh, uh, in, uh, that I've ever seen. And, and so, um, and, and the same as the building there, um. If the, if the manufacturers are claiming you don't need a building permit for that, um, maybe the buyer should go back to the manufacturers and ask for their money back because they've been defrauded. Um, and, you know, we as a municipality are being defrauded by, uh, property owners that put things less up. They got a vacant lot there is what they're being taxed on. And, um, you know, they've, uh, uh, turned it into a, a regular, uh, cottage or cabin environment. And, uh, and so if, if Jeff and team need a little more time to investigate and provide a comprehensive report, um, you know, terrific, but, uh, from my point of view, before we would, uh, deal with this request, uh, these things all need to be brought into compliance and, and right now it looks like there's multiple violations.
Okay, um, I do believe there was a neighboring municipality that, uh, had a bit of a battle with a structure that looks like that, that somebody detached a motor to, that said it was a vessel. And it would be interesting to maybe follow up and see where that ended up going. It was a couple of years ago. Um, that's a really slippery slope. That looks like a dock with a two-story structure as far as my eyes. That's a really slippery slope. That looks like a dock with a two-story structure as far as my eyes look. Otherwise, anybody would be unpinning the back thing and sticking a motor on the thing and saying, I've got a boat like this. Yeah. It's a bit shocking. I think we're all in agreement, so that would be option two, which would defer the decision regarding a request to purchase a shore road allowance. Anybody want to move and second that? Okay, councillor Smith and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council defer the decision regarding regarding a request to purchase a portion of the shore road allowance along the shore of Grace Lake in front of their property, part lot one concession two, part two, plan nineteen R dash sixty-one sixty in the geographic township of Park Court, and further recommends that council direct that the covered marine facility, private cabin and tent shall be removed or brought into compliance with zoning bylaw two thousand five dash one twenty. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, and the last item is the request for submit a minor variance on lands of Daisert.
Yes, this is another another request with some unique history. Mr. Paul has submitted a request to submit a minor variance application on municipal on the municipally owned shore allowance in front of his two properties on tedious lake. Mr. Paul, who took possession of these two adjacent properties in two thousand nineteen, indicated that he would like to construct a dwelling on the existing foundation of a dwelling that burnt down in two thousand and ten. Staff have reviewed this file and given that the dwelling burnt down in two thousand and ten with no applications to rebuild, we are of the opinion that the dwelling has lost its legal non-compliant status with regards to the various setbacks. These setbacks include the water setbacks, the setback to the county road. As per the attached map, actually, the lot doesn't appear to have any buildable area that complies with the required setbacks. Based on the proposal, a minor variance to permit a dwelling to have a reduced water setback and other setbacks would be required to proceed with the development. And staff would have concerns with this proposal, given the provisions of the official plan. Specifically, section five point one point two of the official plan states that water setbacks should be strictly adhered to. In addition to that, there's numerous additional policies within the official plan that protect the integrity of the lakes, shoreline vegetation and other natural heritage features, which are offended by this this type of proposal. The property currently has a shed located by the water and a shipping container. Mr. Paul indicates that the shed is a private cabin. We don't have any record of a building permit for the shed. However, we do have assessment records for two sheds. It's unclear when this shed was built, but looking at some building permit files, it appears that the shed was erected in nineteen ninety. If if that's true and that the shed or private cabin was erected in nineteen ninety, its location is not recognized either by by the official plan and it doesn't have legal non-compliant status with regards to the water setback. Mr. Paul has indicated that the shipping container located on the property is to store tools and equipment for construction of the dwelling. But shipping containers are not permitted in the waterfront zones. Lastly, staff question whether if council chooses to proceed, staff question whether the minor variance process would be appropriate. I think if if council chooses to proceed with this request, staff, that the the zoning bylaw amendment process would be ideal. It's more longer term solution and will make council the decision-making authority as opposed to the committee of adjustment. So so there's some background information. I I request some direction with regards to the request and can answer any questions that council may have.
Let's go to Mallory first before councillors.
Just just for council's clarification, and I think your your report says so. The property changed hands since the the structure burned down, so it's not the same owners that had the structure asking for this. And that's great, Jeff. Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. It's been roughly eleven or twelve years since the structure burnt down. And that's correct. The property changed hands in two thousand and nineteen.
However, when so this person, Mr. Paul, owns the neighboring property and then purchased this in two thousand and nineteen. So they're deemed two separate parcels of land. He's not asked them for them to be deemed together. We don't know. We might have children. You might want to keep the parcel separate. He he bought with the intent and probably with the price of thinking it was a buildable lakefront lot. So I don't know what obligation we have for him, maybe none, maybe it's buyer beware. I don't know. That this was, there was a building on here. He bought it to build something on here. And now because of county road setbacks, the creek setback, the water setback, there's very little, there's, if not any room to to build. So I'm going to open it up to the floor, but Jeff, maybe before I do that, could you go over the overhead photograph map, which has yellow outline, red outlines and green lines coming off the county road and explain what those lines are?
Yes, thank you. So if everybody has that map in front of them, I might just got to decipher it myself first.
Is the yellow the outline of the creek, thirty meters from the creek? I'm just guessing.
I'll look and figure it out myself. I think so. I think. It is unclear to me. I thought the red was the outline of the the property, but my understanding is that the property follows that creek line. And then the yellow horizontal to the shoreline, obviously, that's the setback from the water. The two yellow lines running parallel to the stream are the setback from the water for the stream.
Yeah.
The the green lines to the to the the west side of the picture indicate the street setback from the center of the county, the county road. The purple lines adjacent to that red line are the exterior sideline setbacks adjacent to the county road. And then the lighter the lighter violet or pink lines at the rear are the setbacks from the rear property line. I hope that helps. Actually, in their.
I hope it helps other councillors. It's what I assumed that the yellow was the lot was the delineating the setback because there's a creek and a lake and a road. That is making it very difficult. If the creek wasn't there and it was just a regular lot line, but the creek is there and the water is there and the county road is there, not a municipal road. So the county has higher setbacks. So I just wanted to picture that a little bit better so people could understand. So now I'll open it up to the floor and see if that helped. Councillor Clark and then councillor Smith.
Yeah, you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, I I agree with what you're saying. This is not a great site for anybody doing anything. But I guess my my question to you is is kind of role of of council versus role of the committee of the adjustment. This is, I think, as you've alluded to, this is normally the type of thing that will go to committee of adjustment. Committee of adjustment follows rules that you know, that it's not appropriate to to build on a previous footprint when there's, you know, space available to push it back. And then there's all the other things that they got they look at as well. But are we stepping on their toes if we're making a decision here as opposed to um, you know, you know, as opposed to reviewing the file?
I don't think so. Yes, they could go for minor variance and ask for variance to all the different setbacks. I I think sometimes a zoning bylaw amendment is a longer term solution, so if county wants to consider this as a developable parcel, I think zoning might be more appropriate because then we could determine what those setbacks would be and just identify them in the zoning as a long-term solution.
Could could one thing, Jeff, we could recommend, I I agree, I don't think I should go to the committee of adjustment just to, you know, get turned down. And yet I feel for this person, this was a buildable lot. He bought it thinking it was a buildable lot. Is could he get his own planner to do any kind of studies to show? I mean, it might be a very unusual looking building. It might be a long, thin building that doesn't, you know, normally people like to go perpendicular to the water to have the maximum view out to the water, but it might be where in that little small space that maybe he get a a dwelling that's a unique structure size and we, you know, I I don't know, I just would suggest that he get some professional guidance into how to develop this lot with surveyor planners. And perhaps approach the county because how do you get a relief from the county from a from a county road setback? Not that you want to go that much closer, but you know, if it was.
Yeah, it's certainly complicated and any planning process that will be required if council chooses to proceed would require. We will be asking for some sort of planning justification report. Whether going through the committee of adjustment and trying to meet the four tests or going through a zoning bylaw amendment and trying to comply with official plan policies and provincial policies, staff question whether whether either method could be approved. So we'll be asking for them to provide something. However, today, he's he's just requesting from council to determine whether he can submit a minor variance to on his on our land, sorry, on the shore rollout. As you can see on that same photo, you can see where the old foundation is within the the shoreline rollout. So that's what's being requested today. Does council want to permit him the opportunity to proceed with a planning application on our shore of allowance?
Right, and I'm pretty sure. I don't think that's supported. Councillor Smith, you were next, right? And then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you. So Jeff, as you note, I remember this cottage burning down many years ago and so you were two thousand and ten. Had the then owners made an application to rebuild, say in two thousand, later in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven, would they be permitted to rebuild on that footprint that the original cottage was on?
Yes, if the owners take appropriate steps to start reconstructing development, they do, we internally interpret that to maintain their legal non-compliant status. However, because it's been eleven or twelve years, we're of the opinion that it's been lost.
And and have any rules changed since two thousand and nineteen when Mr. Paul would have purchased this property from the folks who unfortunately had the cottage burned down?
Do you have any specific rules? Could you be more clear about what types of rules have changed?
Well, you know, if you're buying a piece of property as a as a prospective buyer, you've got a you know, I would think an obligation to do a little due diligence and and figure out what it is you're actually buying. I mean, you know, is it is it going to be developable? You know, what will the rules associated with development be? And, you know, that's not, twenty nineteen is not that long ago. I don't think we've changed any of the rules since then. So I just wanted to confirm that in your view, that would be the same. Mr. Paul had a chance to to figure out what he could do or what he couldn't do before his purchase. He owns neighboring lots. It's not like he's not familiar with the community.
Correct. The setback requirements haven't changed in that time. And in fact, if if they requested a compliance letter from the municipality, we would have provided the zoning for the land. And they could have determined that, just with a bit of due diligence, that it it was not a developable property based on those setbacks.
Okay, well, I, you know, based on that, I think that certainly there's no reason to turn this to the committee of adjustment. It's whatever is going to happen here, it's way more than a minor variance. And frankly, I'm not sure that there is a, you know, a model. I drive by this place almost every day. I'm not sure that there is. I didn't know what the boundaries of the lot were, but I'm not sure there is a development approach going forward that's really going to work here. And and so I think, as you've said, Mayor Roberts, if the owner wants to get a professional involved and see if they can come up with something that makes some environmental sense. But it's not obvious what that's going to be.
Okay, so I believe Deputy Mayor Kennedy was next and then councillor McKechnie.
I'd driven by that as well. Just clarification, that is the gray square that's on the map, right, by the water? So if he had a, my understanding, he could have rebuilt or the previous owner could have rebuilt on that same footprint and be grandfathered. So what is the length of time before it falls into non-compliance? One year, two years, three years?
We don't have any specific timeframe within our bylaws. Some of the surrounding municipalities, you determine years. I've had previous discussions with the municipal solicitor and if the steps aren't taken immediately, it can be argued that it's lost right away. So we use try and use some discretion internally. I think, as I mentioned, if if the proper steps were taken to reconstruct that building in a reasonable amount of time, I think it could be argued that we should have recognized that legal non-compliant status, but there has to come a certain amount of time where it loses that development, right? It shouldn't continue forever.
I would agree. Maybe talk to that last applicant and buy that non-compliant structure and put it on this one. Probably shouldn't have said that, sorry.
That's okay. We need a little, we're not, we we see the seriousness of the situation, but every once in a while, we need to chuckle too. So but the purpose of today's request is to ask for minor variance on municipally owned land. I'm sorry, councillor McKechnie was next, so we'll go to you councillor.
My question, my question was similar to Deputy Mayor Kennedy's. Like what what determines the length of time that then then he couldn't build any longer on that site? But what would happen if that cottage was still there, the one that was really, really old today, right on that site? And he wanted to tear it down and build a brand new cottage? Could he not argue that?
Yeah, if the use was continued to this day.
I I remember that cottage years ago. I've driven up there a hundred thousand times, up and down that lake. Used to be a pretty neat little spot there till it burnt down, of course. And but I'm just wondering if the cottage was still existing there. And the guy who just bought it, maybe he's got lots of money and he said, well, I I'm going to tear it down and build something a little more modern, right on the same blueprint. Would we would we grant of that?
Yes, that well, that would provide comply with our policy. That's correct. He would have to purchase the shore rollouts to obtain a building permit or anything like that, given the location of the structure. But yeah, if the use continued until this day, we would recognize that use.
Thank you.
Okay, so and and Jeff always reminds me and maybe other councillors as well is that the purpose when you update a zoning bylaw is to always go to the higher standard. So you're always not trying to go back just because something was there. You know, that's eleven, going to be pushing twelve years ago. So really, it's it's an unfortunate situation that I think that the the owner needs to get some professional advice and we'll let him go. See if he, we don't need to come up with a solution. Are we willing to have a minor variance application on land we own for this? I I think not. So he's got to look for the creative solution with professionals. Okay. Councillor Clark, did you want to add to that or or want to move in second to move on? We're basically denying the request for.
I think just to support what Jeff was saying and and I I did a number of years on on committee of adjustment and other townships and and it's the continued use, this property because it burned down and hasn't been used in what, eleven years? There's been a change of ownership, so you're not denying somebody continued use of it as a cottage. Then the other factor too is is even though there may not be significant setbacks or or applications of the new shore road along setbacks, there were some changes back in the I think in the early teens, whether Jeff were they're kind of pushing back to the, you know, at the twenty meter or whatever. So there's there's things that do change that need to be considered if somebody's looking at building a property or rebuilding a property and and committee of adjustment will look at those things, so. But back to your original point, Madam Mayor, is this is the deal with us giving approval of of getting going to committee of adjustment based on on municipal shore ride allowance. And I don't think we have to have to support that at all. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll look for a mover then. Move that. Councillor Clark and seconded by councillor Smith. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council deny Mr. Paul's request to submit a minor variance application on the municipally owned shore road allowance in front of the lands of Paul in lot seventeen concession eight in the geographic township of Guilford. All in favor? Carries. Hey, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Couple more sections here. We will go to finance. So that's up to you, Barbara.
Good afternoon. Okay, so we'll start off with the check summary report for October twenty twenty-one. And total disbursements for the month were just over two point eight million dollars. We had a few checks this month. Uh, we had a few checks this month and they were um for settlement of the payment into court from our tax sale that was held on July the eighth. Uh, the total there was roughly six hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. Uh, EFTs include roughly seven hundred thousand dollars paid to the vendor for our road resurfacing for twenty twenty one and payroll of just over two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars.
Okay, any comments, questions, check or just see? I think it's pretty amazing that we're down to five checks a month and that was a high month. That everything is able to do electronically and I think thank you to the Treasury Department for that. It's very efficient. So mover in a second or to accept this. Uh councillor Clark, councillor McKechnie. We resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the October twenty twenty one check summary. All in favor? Carrie's, yep. Uh, and next Barbara is some tax adjustments.
Yes, so section three fifty seven tax write offs, uh, three properties. Uh, the reason for the write off is demolition and the total municipal portion of taxes to be written off is five hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, mover in a second or please? Councillor Smith, councillor Clark. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council authorize tax adjustments for applications made under section three fifty seven of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended as follows and totals are there. All in favor? Okay, carried. And the lease agreement with the ski club?
Yes, so we're looking to renew the lease with the Halliburton Highlands Nordic Trail and Ski Club. Um, they've occupied space since July of twenty thirteen. Uh, the last few leases have been renewed on an annual basis, so we're looking to renew for the uh twenty twenty two calendar year um at a lease amount of six hundred dollars plus HST.
And at this time, we're only extending the lease for one year because uh we're in consultation with the ski club about the building of a new garage of which I will report to council as soon as I have something concrete, although I have been in the works, things are in the works. I had a meeting yesterday at a local lumber company to to draft something up. So anyway, that's that's ongoing. So there's a one year lease. Go ahead councillor Smith.
Uh, thank you, and and I understand the rationale for being a one year lease, but uh um, we've recently uh become more consistent with uh having a uh a CPI increase with lease renewals. Um, and um, although this is an annual payment as opposed to a monthly one like the next agreement. Um, would it not be appropriate to put a CPI increase here? It's it's only a one time thing, but you know they may be back next year for another in one year term, who knows? They've been in the same place for uh, I think, a total of nine years now. Um, probably all at the same rate, right?
Anybody want to comment on that?
So staff did um review the a CPI of uh two percent, uh but felt that uh since we're in a bit of a transition here with the uh ski club uh to demolish the current uh building and relocate a new building uh and looking that this would happen within the next twelve months, we uh just felt to keep it at six hundred dollars and consider um uh CPI and future lease agreement renewals.
Okay, um councillor Clark?
Yeah, and I don't think the building is great. In fact, I don't, I don't think anybody else would lease it. So it's a they've had raccoons and everything else. Um, so I I I I don't think we should be pushing this. Let's just kind of ride with it for next year and see where we are in in December of twenty twenty two.
It's a unique situation and councillor Smith, as per your um request and direction, I think all lease agreements are now coming forward with that philosophy though. So we'll see in the next one. It's just this one in particular for the one year. So with that said, uh maybe I'll look for a mover and seconder to see if we can for councillor Clark and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council approves the Halliburton Highlands Nordic Trail and Ski Club Association lease extension in Glee Park for one year commencing January first twenty twenty two and ending December thirty first of twenty twenty two. All in favor? Okay, passed, carried. And the next is with the land trust.
Yes, so we're looking to renew the lease with the Halliburton Highlands Land Trust. They've been a tenant uh since twenty twelve. And they're looking to renew for a five year term uh starting February one of twenty twenty two and ending July thirty one of twenty twenty seven. Uh, there is a schedule, uh proposed fee schedule A um attached uh to include a two percent CPI increase year over year for the five year term.
Okay, pretty self explanatory. So I'll just look for a mover and seconder if I could. Uh councillor McKechnie and councillor Clark. We resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council approves the Halliburton Highlands Land Trust lease extension at the building located at seven thirty nine Mountain Street, Halliburton for a five year period commencing February first twenty twenty two and ending January thirty first twenty twenty seven. All in favor? That carried. So moving on to administration, we've got a couple things, Mallory.
Okay, so the first report here is uh draft bylaws to provide for the acquisition of the Blairlands and also to authorize the agreement which establishes the conditions for the acquisition of the donation. So I've included um the agreement in this attachment and the draft bylaws that are coming forward. If there's any questions, let me know. If not, they'll they'll be coming forward to November twenty third, council.
Maybe just to explain after that bylaw comes uh to council, then how we wanted to close with before the year end.
And that process is happening in the background for sure. So uh these these bylaws authorize the transfer and our lawyer is already working on it. So it will, it will wrap up before the year end for sure.
Perfect. So we don't have a set closing date, but we do have uh it will be within December.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, because all the, all the searches, everything, like you said, the background work is all being done. This is just the bylaw supporting that. Okay, just wanted to say that and uh councillor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a a quick uh comment for the public record that uh um, you know, when we use the word facility here, uh that that need not be a community recreation center, a soccer field or a baseball diamond or a pickleball court, any any one or some combination of those things could be the uh, the facility that uh is uh is constructed on this property as opposed to a uh, you know, an actual recreation center in terms of large building.
Mallory, answer that.
Further on that, on that note, uh, we've also added cultural, so it's not necessarily recreational either. There's cultural uses as well that could potentially go on this land. It's a, it's a good sized property, so it's it's nice to have a little bit of flexibility with what you put there.
I I think uh, um, we've all agreed that we're going to be doing a corporate strategic plan in the new year and I think that this would be an ideal uh opportunity to talk about how we go forward with a with um you know, what it, what would be the next steps once we know that this property has changed hands and you know, how we would go through to have public consultation, input, brainstorming sessions, um, et cetera. Uh, of of what the uses could be for this property, what the sort of vision is for it, and not just this property, other properties. So that we will talk about it in our, in our strategic plan as well. So that'll be something, something exciting to be talking about, uh, something positive for our community and we we uh appreciate that. Plus, the other thing is, we know that it's fifteen acres. But it's a triangular shape and so, you know, we'd have to look at setbacks and where a road would possibly go in and so we'd have to sort of lay out the land. There is a bit of wetland feature there, so how far setbacks would be and what the usable uh space would be. So we need some, some guidance on that for anything that went there. Uh, it's not fifteen flat acres of land in southern Ontario in a square. Um, okay, so mover in a second or for this, please? Uh councillor Clark and Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We resolved that the committee, the whole accepts the draft bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Marnie Yvonne Blair O'Marie, excuse me, the purpose of establishing terms and conditions related to the donation of the Blairlands as written and further accepts the draft bylaw to provide for the acquisition of the Blairlands legally known as part lot three concession seven and further described as part lot one nineteen R dash one zero three one zero in the geographic township of Dyer as written and further recommends that the above noted bylaws be brought to the November twenty third, twenty twenty one council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, carried. And very lastly, draft fee bylaw amendment for the electric vehicle charging stations, which is Yep.
Oh, sorry, keep going, yeah.
No, I just uh, on my, I don't have a a mayor Facebook page, but I was walking on Saturday and on my, I took a couple of pictures and on my personal Facebook page, I posted a couple of pictures and I had great response to those and uh we'll get the message out. It's it's great to see them there. So go ahead, Mallory, sorry.
Great. So now that they're up, um, we need a, we need to amend our fee bylaw again, which we like to do a lot. So this is just bringing forward a report to uh authorize the the fee for the new stations. This uh suggested user fee came from Corey McKay, our climate change coordinator, and uh she spoke with Barbara, our treasurer too, to kind of nail down what will actually be charged. You account for the transaction fees and so on. So uh, these are the the recommended uh charges. So if there's any questions, let me know. And oh, and to where we move on, it's not just when you're charging, it's the amount of time that you're connected to the machine because you're still taking up space. So that's how, that's how you get charged.
Yes, per per time. Is there, it is it on the hour by the hour? So if someone is uh, did they pay to unplug? Like, can you explain to me how that works? So say, you know, you you drive into the space and you plug in, do you pay when you unplug?
I'm not sure how that works. I I have been given a rundown on how that system works. That's a good question, though. Possibly Corey could answer that for us and I back with something. That's a good question. I don't have an electric vehicle. It's all, it's all news to me, so.
Well, no, I don't, you know, it's it's not as common up here because we don't have charging stations unless you have one in your home. Um, anyway, I was just curious that and I wondered too if we would, we did talk at one point when we did approve putting the charging station there is that we didn't want somebody um parking there for eight hours because they've got an electric vehicle and they work in town. But I think at two fifty an hour, that would preclude anyone from wanting to do that. They basically need to, the the purpose is to plug in for, you know, two hours or maybe three at the very most and you're out for lunch and then you come back and so it's you're not, wouldn't be parking there for the whole day because eight times two fifty is too much. Councillor Smith?
Well, actually, uh, you know, if you come from Toronto, two fifty for an hour is uh is cheap. Um, so uh, I I was looking for clarification on this because it's you know, it's it's very clear that uh when you're plugged in, you're paying two fifty an hour to that space. But if you're just parked in this space unplugged, are you paying two fifty an hour for that parking space or because nobody else can use it when you're there? Like, so why do we say, uh, you know, connected as opposed to just in the space?
I think it's when you're connected. It's not just
Nobody else can use it.
Yes, but you can only be parked in the space if you're connected.
I don't, I don't know. Um, I imagine I could pull a, I could pull a pickup truck in there that's uh doesn't have electric and just say, well, it's a good parking spot. I'll take this one. Thank you.
Well, we need proper signage, electric vehicle charging, parking only. Okay, I have Mallory and Tamara want to weigh in, so let's
Tamara might weigh in with something similar, but perhaps this is something that can come forward through our parking bylaw to to make it clear that you could, you could get penal or you would get penalized if you were parked in front of this and not charging because that's taking up a space. So, but Tamara had a point too, so I'll let her comment.
Yeah, no, it's just the same thing. We have staff there. If there were a complaint or something that somebody was abusing the parking, they could call the bylaw officer to come assist. And if we found our rules weren't strong enough to ask people to move nicely, then we would have to come back and put something more clearly in writing, I think.
I think we we should re- request that something come back in writing because our parking bylaw as an example has a, has a fine for someone without a handicap sticker parking in a handicap spot. So this is similar that if somebody's using these parking spots, these are only for charging only. We could have a maximum time to charge and we could say you know, no, whatever, it needs to be included in our parking bylaw. Um, because we don't want someone with a big gas guzzling pickup truck parking there because it's a closed spot to town. Unless it's an electric vehicle or hybrid. Go ahead, Tamara.
Perhaps we could ask, ask the other townships that are installing them how they intend to handle that so that we're somewhat consistent.
Absolutely, but it would be helpful to have, just, you know, to see if, I think there could be something included. We can accept this fee uh bylaw right now, but see what else is could be in there for um how other areas do handle that. It's not a parking space, it's a charging space. Okay, so for now, the uh recommendation with the um amounts is is what we're discussing, so uh mover in a second or on that. Councillor Clark and seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We resolved that the committee, the whole accepts the amendments to the fees and charges bylaw as written and further recommends that the bylaw be brought to the November twenty third, twenty twenty one council meeting for approval. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And that concludes the open portion of our meeting. So um, I know this is committed to the whole, but being remembrance day, I uh hope the councillors are able to, we are still able to attend the ceremony at the Senate top and um, I'll be there and I was asked to speak, so I'll be there on Thursday morning and um I encourage any of you, if you're able to, to um come to the Senate top on Thursday. So with that, I will look for a mover to go into closed session. Uh councillor Donaldson and councillor McKechnie. We resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its regular meeting at two oh three to discuss matters pursuant to section two thirty nine of the municipal act two thousand and one as amended pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And we are in closed. It takes a few minutes to go into closed, so just uh bear with us. Could you turn off your uh camera if you don't mind? Okay, so we're back in open session and there is no report from closed at this time, so I'll look to see if there's any notice of motion. Okay, and seeing none, I will ask for a mover in a second or to adjourn. Uh councillor Smith and councillor Donaldson. We resolved that the committee, the whole adjourn its meeting held on November ninth, twenty twenty one at two twenty three P M. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you so much. We are adjourned. Have a great rest of your afternoon and um we'll see you next time. Bye now.